Yes, President Householder.
Here.
Vice President Lewis. And just to update you, I've received a text from Dr. Lewis. He's trying to log in right now.
So I see him.
Okay, perfect. Trustee Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Wonderful. All right, and it doesn't look like we do a flag salute before closed session. So we only have one item in our closed session. Item A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Superintendent. And so we are going to break for the next 45 minutes or so and we'll come back at 7 o'clock for our open session.
It is Wednesday, August 25, 2021. We are returning from our closed session, which was at 6:15. It is now 7:03 PM. And if Ms. Cavallaro can re-establish her quorum for us.
President Householder?
Here.
Vice President Lewis?
Here.
Trustee Hack? I see you, Trustee Hack. We don't hear.
Here.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavallaro. Next, we have reports from closed session. There is no reportable action, but I did fail to ask if we had public comment. And I see that Ms. Beighton Court is on our call. So I just wanted to make sure we didn't have public comment for the closed session items. I'm not hearing any. I think that that means that there wasn't any. Next up, we have our flag salute. So if Dr. Lewis can lead us in the flag salute.
I'd be honored. Right hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. Next up, we have our approval on the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting on May 19. So is there a motion on this item?
I say move.
Moved by Trustee. Seconded by Trustee Rocha. If we can please have a roll call.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes for the Special Board of Education meeting of May 19, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, we have item E, which is the approval of the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting. And that one was for May 26, 2021. So is there a motion on? motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha, segmented by Trustee Dr. Lewis. Can we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of May 26th, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, we have our superintendent report, so I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Nello.
Yes, well, good evening. I hope you don't mind. I wrote some things down because I want to make sure I cover everything. So I want to give you an update on where we are with deploying our technical devices, specifically laptops to schools and students. As you know, it was a very short four-week summer, during which time we ran 23 programs. Many of them were reliant on technology. So we had collected at the end of the school year, the ones that came back, did 32 programs, recollected them. So right now, we have approximately 13,000 in our inventory that were returned in our unusable condition. So all laptops had to be reimaged and ready for deployment out to the school sites. And we developed a priority list. And so first was Deer Valley High School, Dozier-Libby High School, Live Oak Park Middle School, Black Diamond Middle School, Orchard Park, Thomas Gaines, and Prospect. So all of those have their inventory. And then by the end of this week, we will have all devices at Antioch High School deployed. And we also, just as a short-term measure, we delivered 72 laptops to each elementary school, so in the form of cowl. So those are computer-on-wheels, so teachers can use them. We purchased an additional 2,475 laptops over the summer with an estimated time of arrival prior to the start of school. But you can imagine, just as when COVID occurred, there was a backlog of schools needing more technology. So that delivery's been delayed. We did receive notice today that 816 laptops have been shipped and received at our warehouse. And we're still awaiting the estimated arrival date on the remaining 1,600. So hopefully, we'll have those in the hands of students very soon. We are prepared with, should a classroom need to go pivot into distance learning again, we do have enough that we could immediately deploy to any classroom, any school site. It's really a matter of manpower at this point. You know, there's a nationwide shortage of workers. And so making sure that, I mean, we're working 24/7 to get those reimaged and in the hands of students, but I just want you to have that. And the start of the school year has challenged speaking of people resources. So in many areas, as we're waking up aging buildings, we are finding that some things are not in workable condition because they haven't been started in a long time. And so those are the unanticipated repairs we're working really hard on. And I just want to thank all of our staff for understanding and just for the work that they're doing. And finally, I wanted to update you on COVID testing and a new dashboard that we have. So contact tracing, we've taken that extremely seriously. And this week, we've tested hundreds of students just in three days. We have thousands of tests in stock and thousands more on the way. And last week, we applied to be part of a California Department of Education, I don't want to say grant, but it's similar to that, to where they are now going to help us with our supply and also pay for the amount of overtime it's taking to do contact tracing. So this afternoon, we updated, well, actually, we went live on a COVID dashboard in just an effort to be more transparent. And you can go to our site and go to our COVID-19 page under our district, and you'll be able to see that. Now, we hope too, just from hearing feedback from parents and staff, if there's some other information that they would like to see on that dashboard, we welcome that. We want to hear if it's something that we can legally provide, we want to do that so that people are as informed as possible. And I hadn't planned on saying this, but I will say that the Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy has nearly 1,000 students in it. So you can imagine, it's taken a lot of shift and a lot of movement and heavy lifting. And I want to thank everyone who's been a part of that. The Principal Natasha Thomas has just worked around the clock, as well as Amy Betancourt and Christine Abara, our Associate Superintendent, making sure that we meet the needs of families. So that concludes my report this evening. Thank you so much. Yes?
Trustee-
Sorry, I had a quick question. I just wanted to clarify. So if students at specific sites needed laptops and they needed access to that technology, there is, there are laptops available, correct?
Yes, we could deploy that immediately.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I understand, I was for the superintendent. As these students, they're not all our students, right?
I'm checking.
Coming in?
From the Thomas Gaines Academy?
Yeah.
That's correct. We have students who are attending from Walnut Creek, Oakley, Knightson, I want to say Lafayette as well, who are attending. But right now, we put a hold on outside students to make sure that we're serving all of our students. And then we put them on a waiting list.
Okay. And so is it possible that we will go back and ask for their ADA?
I actually entered into agreements with all of them because the way that schools were funded this year, it was, they like to call it hold harmless, but it basically, you got your revenue based on how many students were in your district the previous year. And so these are students who weren't in our district the previous year. So their ADA revenue, the money that we get to serve them, went to their home districts. So what we've done is filled out an inter-agency agreement so that we will, I hate to say for lack of a better word, but we will invoice them quarterly and receive that revenue. And if you recall, that also counts for revenue for next year. We'll be doing that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. So a couple of things. ADA, just a reminder for the public, is average daily attendance, and that's the amount of money associated with per pupil the school district is getting. Now, secondarily, will we, at some point, I know we probably don't have it now because there's a lot of moving parts, but will it be possible to get sort of the breakdown of how many students are coming from where at Thomas Gaines? You know, I think that's something that might be interesting for folks.
Absolutely. And in fact, I just had a conversation today about how we would pull that data so that we can, it will be easily, will be easily provide that once we go to bill the outgoing districts. It'll be broken down, and so I can definitely provide that for the board.
Wonderful. I just wanted, I'm looking to see if there's any movement from any of the other board members in case there was a question. It doesn't look like there is. So moving right along to our public comment section. So the first is individuals to address the board on items not on the agenda, and this is from the general public. So do we have any of those this evening?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. Name not provided, community member. Good evening. I am a parent of two children that fall within the district boundaries of Antioch Unified School District. I am an advocate for my children's success. I work for Contra Costa County. My wife is a teacher within AUSD. My son has special needs. If it was not for my wife being familiar with AUSD and education in general, it would be next to impossible to navigate the pathways of getting our child set up for school. You offer no information of substance on your website. A direct quote from your website is, "Our mission to..." I don't know what 10 periods mean, but apparently someone thinks it suffices as a mission statement. There is no community outreach or resources for finding other services, even those offered by other providers, public or private. My son is supposed to start transitional kindergarten, but since we both work, I cannot find anything on TK or special day preschool. If you do not provide it, then you should provide information on private providers that work within your school district to provide a full day of childcare. Instead, the support services page is blank. Looking on the other department websites that information is available, such as Brentwood Union School District, we have had to repeatedly contact various departments within your organization for us to get an IEP set up. Even more, just to get the speech therapy that you are required to provide. My emails and messages are still unanswered. Luckily, my wife had better luck when it came from an AUSD email. In summary, finish your website, provide basic resources that are required under the IDEA. The Antioch Unified Administration, of which you oversee, once again, fill Antioch children. Janice Lipinski, community member. COVID cases continue to rise in AUSD while temperature checks are not being performed on buses anymore. Special education needs special precautions concerning COVID, and now COVID has... I apologize, my computer just froze. One moment. Sorry. So if you can pause the clock for one minute? Right, there we go. I'm back. Let me start that over. Janice Lipinski, community member. COVID cases continue to rise while temperature checks are not being performed on buses anymore. Special education needs special precautions concerning COVID, and now COVID has struck our sped classroom at Belshaw Elementary. Sped lives off a lot of donations. Why? When this district receives ample funds, what are the funds going? Sped needs our attention at this time, and our sped youth need to be prioritized before we lose lives to COVID. This coming from a mother who almost lost her son to a virus in 2019. Open your hearts and minds to what is in front of you. Thank you. Maya Houston, community member. I am a parent of a first-grade student at Kimball Elementary. I am very concerned by the lack of testing availability to students and families in our community. Last week, when I tried to get my daughter tested, as is required by the school before a sixth student can return to class, Kaiser advised me that the next available appointment was six days away. I met test results take between two and four days. Kaiser said to ask the school for testing. The school told me there are no tests available to students at this time, and that they don't even have a list of community resources available to parents. The Contra Costa County Health Department told me that only same-day appointments are available, which was in Richmond. If my daughter did have COVID, it would be 10 days after the last day she attended school before we would have a test result. This is concerning for obvious reasons. If we have to keep our children safe this year, we have to do better. Mount Diablo Unified School District has made COVID tests available on a weekly basis to any student or family who needs one. Why isn't Antioch doing the same? Our city has higher case numbers and lower vaccination rates than many other cities in Contra Costa County, and seems to be doing less to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. This is irresponsible and needlessly jeopardizes the health and safety of our children and the entire community. Also, when will Antioch Unified make a COVID dashboard available online so parents can track positive case numbers in schools? We are three weeks into the school year, and this information is still not available to the community. I hope the district will improve both transparency and testing availability as soon as possible to keep our children and the entire Antioch community safe. Name not provided, community member. If the school board president is also the Antioch clerk, how can she still be in the AUSD board while her collusion with the mayor was just discovered? Is there an investigation? I am shocked the board would have her as president with pending allegations. Name not provided, community member. Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy rocks. Thank you. Bryn Kristin Hendricks. Good evening, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and School Board. I am grateful for your service to the education of this community. I am a substitute teacher for the district and a concerned community member. My children graduated and pursued college from this school district, and I have taken on numerous long-term teaching positions within the district. I am aware of the challenges the COVID-19 pandemic has placed on our students. An educator once told me, quote, "If a child gets behind by fourth grade, they never catch up," end quote. I would like to help. I believe we have a huge untapped resource in our community. Concerned citizens who have a little time each week they can give to helping our young ones, please consider working together to give our students the boost they need to successfully complete their education. Thank you for your time and attention. Name not provided, community member. I am concerned with the district protocols regarding COVID. How does the district reassure the safety of our students relating to COVID? Is there a detailed protocol plan in place relating to COVID or possibilities of COVID? Are all staff members being informed in a timely manner? Parents? Are schools actually being disinfected each night considering a shortage on staff members or employees? If a sibling tested positive for COVID, are other siblings in the household from the same school and/or different schools in the district requiring those to quarantine or be tested for COVID? Velma Wilson, community member. As a proud parent of now two alumni students of AUSD, I really want to acknowledge the amazing work Stephanie Anello and her entire staff are doing. I totally agree that Stephanie Anello is one of the best superintendents this district has had, and we, I mean, we, need to support her efforts 110%. She needs to have clear goals that are not driven by a personal vendetta against her or politically motivated, but are truly in the best interest of the students, families, and staff she oversees. It has been very clear that the board president has had personal issues with Stephanie that she has been very public about. I would recommend that an unrelated third-party assist with the process of evaluating Stephanie. Include parents like myself, who have been engaged in how schools function, so they understand how vital Stephanie's role is and what she does. I totally appreciate all of the hard work our superintendent has done for this district. For those that say you haven't seen her at school sites and events, I say grab your mirror and evaluate how many school events, district meetings, and public events that you have been to to support your student. Are you attending back-to-school nights, open houses, LCAP meetings, parent advisory meetings, PTA meetings, school-site council meetings, to name a few? If not, why? Stephanie is one person, and let's be clear, she's permitted to have days where she deserves a day off. She's not a robot, and I have personally witnessed her working on weekends with IT to reimagine and sanitize the thousands of laptops that students need. The list can go on. Stephanie, keep your head up and know that no weapon formed against you shall prosper. You absolutely rock. I am Velma Wilson, representing Velma Wilson. Name not provided, community member. Good evening. As a parent in the district, I am concerned about the offerings for my son's special needs. My son has been in preschool since he was two years old, but due to his speech delay and problems with auditory processing, he is having a difficult time keeping up socially with his peers, and also has a difficult time following the directions of his teacher. These difficulties have led to safety concerns in his current environment. He is currently in a TK class at kinder care, but the director is concerned about meeting his needs while simultaneously keeping the other children in his class safe. I inquired about my son attending a special-day TK class this year and was told this is not something the district offers, and that he would have to attend a preschool class instead. I do not understand why the district does not offer an SDC TK class. My son has already been in preschool for two and a half years. This year, he started TK but requires additional support. He should not have to take a step back in order to get the services he needs. Even though I had reservations about him being placed in a preschool, I went ahead with his IEP to have his setting changed and to set goals. After I signed the IEP, I was informed that he would be placed in an afternoon class at Kimball, and I know that this placement will not be good for him. I know that placements are based upon availability, but I don't understand why parents in my situation do not have options. I am concerned that my son will be attending school from 12 to 3 PM, when most days, he still takes a nap sometime within that timeframe. I'm also concerned about his lunch situation. Both my husband and I work full-time, so he will be attending daycare. I am afraid that he will be picked up before the school serves lunch, and from my understanding, the preschool class does not do lunch because it is only a three-hour class. I guess I just do not understand how an afternoon placement for my special-needs four-year-old is my only option. As far as I know, no TK or elementary class, for that matter, goes that late into the day. I have also inquired about receiving services at his current placement and was told that the school district only provides services with Head Start because that is who they have a contract with. I do not understand why the district doesn't contract with another preschool, any other preschool providers, as not everyone qualifies to attend a Head Start program. I have been trying everything within my means to have my child's needs met and have been met with one roadblock after another. Thank you. And that is the final comment for this item.
Wonderful. So next up, we have the public comments on items not on the agenda from staff. So do we have any of those this evening?
Yes, we do. Sharon Weaver, staff. Good evening. I am quite happy with the reception of the Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy and fully support the choice for families while the rate of COVID infection remains high. I want to remind the decision-makers to remember our in-person students and their need for access to laptops. On March 13- On March 13th, 2020, Turner students had computer access that we thought needed boosting. We had a computer lab with desktops and a second computer lab with laptops. We had two computers on wheels, cows, with class sets of laptops. We also had a class set of iPads for kindergarten. Our situation is now deplorable. As of yesterday, Turner has one cow of laptops for intervention specialists and one cow of laptops for the rest of the classes to share. This is so wrong and I do not believe you're aware of the current situation. From posts I see from my colleagues at other elementary sites, they are sadly lacking in the technology all our students need. Please investigate and update the community on the status of laptops for their in-person students. Thank you, Sharon Weaver. Staff, name not provided. Good evening, AUSD Board of Education. I am a staff member within the district that has kids in another district. I would like to compliment district staff in their handling of the COVID pandemic. The accolades include the actual testing of students, thorough contact tracing and communication with parents. Excellent work. I assure you, this high level of competence is not happening in other districts and I am proud of our district staff as well as the entire AUSD that is working through these very difficult and unprecedented times. Staff, name not provided. Good evening, Board members and AUSD staff. I express the frustration I have with AUSD's COVID testing policy. Current policy states that students with any COVID symptoms must quarantine at home for 10 days and are encouraged to test on their own. Only students with a known exposure to COVID for more than 15 minutes who are not vaccinated will be allowed to utilize the rapid test in the school office. There are many flaws with this policy. One, it is not easy to find testing appointments in our neighborhoods. When a test is available, oftentimes the results take days to come back. This has discouraged many families from testing. If a student is visibly sick and has multiple symptoms, we should offer them our rapid tests. Two, many of our families are not testing on their own, so we do not know who has been exposed or not exposed in order to test. Therefore, we are spreading this virus without knowing who needs to quarantine until it is too late. Three, sending students home for 10 days with a packet of work is not helping our students academically. These students are further behind than we imagined. I have fifth graders who are still struggling with addition. The last thing they need is to be at home, not learning. If we tested six students, we could get them back into the classroom as soon as possible. Also, if a student is really sick, should we make them complete an independent study packet when they need to be resting? In conclusion, we have tests and we have COVID money. We should be testing more often, properly quarantining staff and students and do our part to stop the spread. When all is said and done, will AUSD be blamed for not doing enough or will we have proudly fought this deadly virus? Staff, name not provided. Our parents aren't getting their students tested and we are testing barely anyone. We are Donald Trump. If we don't test, we won't have any positive cases. It looks like our school doesn't have many cases because no one is testing. I feel incredibly unsafe. I have voiced my concerns to no avail. Our district should have enough rapid tests to be sending them home with every sick student. Every teacher should be able to get one upon request for themselves and for students. The cost doesn't matter. We should keep the seating charts for all eating occasions. Mash should be required unless the students have distance, even at recess. If you could see an elementary school recess, you would agree. Also, students should not be sent back to class when they aren't feeling well. Staff, name not provided. Dear Board members and AUSD staff, I am a proud AUSD teacher and have been for 12 years. I am extremely disappointed in how this school year has begun and how unprepared the district was to welcome our students and staff back onto campus. Students have not been on campus for 18 months and while I know the district was working hard on other items, our classrooms and basic needs should have not been overlooked. Many classrooms throughout the district did not or still do not have AC. School-wide printers were shut down for the first few weeks. Teachers do not have working projectors in their classrooms to teach our students. Not only do we not have laptops for our students as was planned, but the technology is constantly failing and rostering in different formats are just now completed. When we finally get two cow carts, the computers still needed to be configured before students could use them. I had to take my prep period to configure the cows, which is not part of my job. I can only imagine how difficult it is to run a district, but these are not acceptable. As a parent and a staff member, I am disappointed the district was this unprepared. Amanda Boett, staff. Good evening. I am writing tonight because there are a few things that have been of concern as a teacher in the district. For over the last couple of years, I have heard the board talk about our failing test scores. How are we supposed to improve our test scores when we do not provide the right tools to succeed? Teachers are not given appropriate staff development in order to grow in our teaching profession. I can honestly say that over my last nine years in the district, I have not received any real and meaningful professional development. This past step development was as bad as ever. I see so many teachers in other districts and states talking about their district providing LETRS, Letters Training, which is based in the science of reading, and here I am getting a training on Microsoft product and my students don't even have computers in their hands. Speaking of computers, I'm a little upset about the technology that was distributed to sites. We received two cows at my site, however, we had at least six cows and two iPad carts prior to COVID. I think we should get as much technology back as we gave, especially considering we own site funds to make sure we had enough technology for students. Second, how are we supposed to grow our students as readers when we can't even put books in their hands? We got rid of library text, which has made it impossible for our students to access books within our school libraries. If this isn't bad enough, we don't even provide teachers with books or funds to have classroom libraries. If the teachers want a classroom library, they're expected to buy the books themselves. Our students cannot grow as readers or develop a love for reading if we are not able to put books in their hands. Lastly, I am completely appalled by our district's COVID protocols. Our numbers are as high as ever and simply following the county and state guidance is not good enough. Why are teachers not able to get a COVID test at their school site? My husband is a vaccinated first responder and he is required to get tested at work weekly and also has the option of getting tested at work more frequently if he so chooses. It seems like the district is going with the theory that if we don't test, the numbers won't be so high. I also think that all schools should be following the same protocols. Why can't a kid call out sick and be allowed to return to the next day at one site, but at another site, they need to quarantine for 10 days? The district's whole protocol makes no sense. This is the final comment for this item.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Bettenport, for that. Next up, we have district reports and we have two this evening. So our first one is our general obligation bond presentation. So with that...
Good evening, Board. This evening, we have a bond consultant, Connor Lind and Dave Olson from Backstrom, Macaulay, Barry and Company to provide just a brief overview and presentation around general obligation bond election in response to the board's request. So Mr. Olson and Mr. Lind, are you on the call?
I think I am. Can everyone see me?
Yes.
Can everyone hear?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. It's harder to give these presentations over Zoom where I can't see the nodding heads. But so if I miss something, please speak up. But thank you, Jessica. As Jessica said, my name is Dave Olson and I work with Backstrom, Macaulay, Barry. We've been the financial advisors. I've been the financial advisor on the district's bond program on and off since the Measure C in 2008. And Connor Lind is here as well. He's been the district's political consultant. I know that the political appetite of the voters is a major factor in what type of bond program we can put together. So I wanted to have him here and Jessica and I want to have him here to answer any questions that you might have as I move through the presentation. It's a pretty brief presentation, but I did want to say before I started that this presentation is a little bit more prescriptive than I typically make to boards. And in part, that's because the direction I think the district should move is very clear to me. I don't... The conclusions you might reach are up to you, obviously, but I think the direction that the district should be moving down in evaluating whether to pursue a general obligation bond in 2022 is pretty clear to me. So with that, move on to the first slide. The district has significant unmet facility needs. There's no doubt about that. You prepared a facilities master plan a couple of years ago that put that number at $1.3 billion. I don't know that we'll be able to spend that amount of money on the facility improvements, but it certainly shows there's a lot of need. The... Obviously, if you have 20 schools that you need to maintain, continue to rehabilitate, that costs money over time. The safety standards evolve, educational practices evolve. Those require investment of funds. If you don't have the funds to do those things, as they become emergencies, it's going to fall back on the district's general fund. So it is very clear to me that there are significant facility needs in the district. Next slide. It's also very clear to me that the general obligation bonds need to be part of the solution, needs to be the biggest part of the solution. Every school district in Contra Costa County has a general obligation bonds outstanding. It's had... All but one has had multiple successful elections. All but four have had successful elections since your last successful election, 2012. So it's a very common way for school districts to get money. It's also a very effective way to raise money. If we're putting a bond program together, given the size of your tax base and how these bond programs are put together, it's going to generate tens of millions over time, over multiple elections, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars that you need to invest in your school facilities. There's no way for you to get that money by, you know, reducing general fund expenditures and devoting some more of your general fund to that, to facility maintenance or relying on a capital campaign and anything. The bonds are just going to be the most efficient way to fund those projects. You don't have huge amounts of development moving forward like you did in the 80s and 90s. You're not selling any sites, which can be another worthwhile source. So if you want to generate the type of money that it takes to improve your facilities to the level that they need to be, it's going to have to be through general obligation bonds. So the last thing I mentioned, state funding. State funding can be really significant here, but the way they've run the state program in the past, and I expect them to continue to run it into the future, is you're going to need your matching share. So we're going to need to come up with that if we want to make a dent in the amount of facility needs you have. You have significant needs. It's clear how you ought to be funding those. Next slide's a brief introduction to general obligation bonds. I know that we have new board members. I don't know how familiar you are with the general obligation bond process, but kind of a way to describe it, one way to describe it is that it's a deal between the district and the district voters. And if they say by voting yes at a 55% on a Prop 39 bond issue, the projects we want you to do, we'll pay for those projects out of a special tax. It's not entirely fair, right? Because they can't come up with their list of projects. So the district comes up with that with a maximum dollar amount of bonds that you're going to spend on those projects and an estimate of what they're going to cost and put that before them as a vote. But if they approve 55%, it gives you the right to sell those bonds, to spread those costs over time and to have the taxpayers pay those costs. So is there any... Do people want me to go into any more detail? Are there any questions you want to answer about general obligation bonds? It's a... You put it before the voters. If they vote yes, you sell the bonds. That gives you the money. They pay for the bonds.
Yeah, we'll do... We'll just wait till the end too and we'll just do a round robin to make it more clear.
All right. Thank you. The next slide talks about the district's experience with general obligation bonds. You have had two successful measures, both achieved more than 60% of the vote, both raising around $60 million within a portion of the district. The older area of the district, the district that was not subject to your Mellow Roost tax, that was still being levied at that time. So all the money had to be spent within the old part of town, what we call SFID Number One, if you look to the right. That's School Facilities Improvement District Number One. So the district divided itself into a separate area, named that School Facilities Improvement District Number One, and had the bond election, both the voting and the spending of those bond proceeds within this area. Both got 60% of the vote and the district was able to do a lot of work with that money, spent the money over a period. Some of the money is still remaining, but between 2008 and now, you've been spending money at about $8 million per year. Ideally, we'd be able to spend money a little bit faster than that, but that's the program we've been running. Next slide. Next slide talks about a third election that was, that the district nearly achieved 18 months ago, right before the pandemic. That was Measure T. It was a $105 million bond authorization. We estimated the cost of that at $60 per $100,000. That's the maximum you could be under Prop 39. And that was going to fund improvements within this SFID Number Two. So School Facilities Improvement District Number Two was the rest of the district, all of the district that wasn't included in SFID Number One. One of the reasons we wanted to have the sale, or the district wanted to have the sale or the election within SFID Number Two at that time was that those schools had not been touched with Measure C or Measure B. And two, that the tax had rolled off. So there were no more Mellow Roost taxes being collected in that area, which was one reason that we didn't, that the district chose 10 years earlier not to have the bond election in that area and divide out all the area of town for the bond election. Unfortunately, that didn't pass, but it was very, very close. 54.62%. And depending on how you calculate it, if 78 new people showed up and voted yes, you would have won. Or if 35 people who voted no voted yes, you would have won. So out of 10,000 people, it was less than 100 votes that made the difference. Obviously, that means that the voters found a lot to like in this bond program. Not quite enough to pass it, but they found a lot to like in it. Next slide. And that's what we discuss on the next slide. So 54.6 is pretty close. And the question we ought to be asking ourselves now, if we're thinking about putting a new bond measure on the ballot, is what made the difference, right? Was the... People have a problem with the projects? Was there any project in particular that got named or didn't get named in the ballot language that prevented people from voting yes or that they failed to get excited about? Should we have had a different amount? Maybe $100 million was too much and if we had gone for a $60 or $80 million bond election with a lower tax impact, that might have made a difference. Should we have had a different financing plan? We just kind of spread these costs. This was not quite a max-out program, but this was a program where we spread the costs over 30 years or longer. If we were paying off the bonds sooner, would that have made a difference? Kind of the next couple are maybe more important questions. Connor would definitely, if he's on mute, he's screaming that I should have put these first, but the question of whether you would have had more success on a district-wide basis versus an SFID election is a question of how do you want to move forward? Question of whether you had the bond election, a general election in November versus in March when you actually had the election. By the time the next November came around, which might have been a second bite at the apple, right? COVID was on us and it was, you know, it was not something that we were prepared to do at that time. Should the communication strategy have been different in terms of what we emphasized in the public, how we communicated the message, any of those things? So when you're at 55.6%, you're 78 votes away from winning 35 votes, whatever, however you want to count it, looking at what could have made the difference, I think it's an important thing for us to do as we move forward. So the next slide talks about how we might do that. We want to assess the community opinion, maybe by engaging a research firm to run a poll. There are other ways to do it, but if you run a poll, you can get some objective data. Polls aren't perfect these days. It's... There's challenges to putting them together sometimes. You know, I think at this level, you'll hear some people in school... You know, you, I think at this level, you'll hear some people in school bond elections say, oh, the value of the poll is less than it used to be. But in this particular case, you could ask some questions that would allow you to make the argument of, you know, what I described here. We heard you, right? What part of the bond program that we had last time did you not like? We make adjustments to that. Hopefully, that's enough to get over the 55% threshold. And I say at the bottom, to the extent you don't want to fund a public opinion survey, there are other ways to get some objective information, allow you to do some of the same things. So what was it that kept us from passing it last time? I think if you represent, hey, we made a good faith effort to change those things, that that's a, Connell could say better than I, I shouldn't be giving election advice, but to me, that's a compelling issue. Next slide goes through the process. This is what I very much believe in, and I'm going to say it twice, once here, once on the next slide, then I'm going to take questions. But it seems clear the direction you ought to go. There ought to be a kind of a deliberate process here where we talk about the facility needs. You know, what are they? What would happen if we didn't meet those needs? The next time, next thing you want to talk about and take them in separate items, each element separately. What are the available resources? And I can talk about how a bond program can be put together, whether it's 40 million, 60 million, 80 million, 100 million. Maybe it's district-wide, it's 150 million or more. You know, how should we be making choices between the size of the election in a way that it's most likely to get 55% vote? Connell can come back, talk about the political environment. Maybe if you do a poll, the pollster can be part of that discussion, talking about what they found, what makes it appealing, you know, what's appealing to your voters. And then come back to talk about, okay, we've heard all the things, we've come up with a plan. What's the process for getting from the idea up here to being on the ballot, to winning, to spending money? Like I said, I'm going to say it differently, in the same message differently. But, and I said at the beginning, this is more prescriptive than I typically am, but it is very, very clear to me that the district facilities need improvement. It's very clear to me that the district should do something about that. That probably means in part a bond, but could mean some other things too, as we open up the discussion. But what the district chooses to do and how you choose to do it should be based on what's likely to succeed. I'd rather have, right? Measure T was a good plan. You had held up hope of getting $100 million to spend on facilities in the newer area of town, but it didn't get 55% vote, so it resulted in zero dollars moving into your facilities. I would take 20 million over zero. I would take 40 million over zero. I would take 60 million over zero. I would take all those amounts over zero. We need to put a plan together that gets money into the district's facility programs. I think particularly because we're running out of that last series of bond monies. It's already spoken for. And things that break are going to take dollars to fix it. If you don't have facility dollars, it's coming out of the general fund. And also, I'd like people to recognize this is going to be a long-term project, right? This is, the needs are so great that it's going to be like the journey that begins with the first step forward. We need to continue to address it over a period of time, in my view, in maybe a 10- or 20-year effort until we're kind of turning the corner and getting the facilities our kids deserve. But that doesn't mean we should take an all or none approach. We got to get started on it, in my view. So that's my brief presentation, and I welcome any questions. And I know Connell would love to answer any questions and correct anything that I said that he disagrees.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm actually going to ask our newer board members if they have any questions. But before I pass it over, I'll start off with Dr. Lewis, then pop over to Trustee Hernandez. I just want to say that I am wholly interested in a bond, and I also think we should do a poll. So that's just to start off where I'm at with this. So, Trustee Dr. Lewis, I don't know if you have questions, comments, want to give a?
Yeah. So I think, you know, bonds are a healthy conversation. Obviously, you know, I don't want to give a position, but I think they are, they are a healthy conversation. I think they can be beneficial in a lot of different ways. I had a couple of quick questions about the last time that this was rolled out, because again, I wasn't as intimately involved in the process. So, you know, I know you mentioned sort of polling the community to talk about, to get a poll on how folks feel. But were there any town hall meetings? Because from my experience, being out in the community and talking to folks, some of the concerns that people have is, okay, well, now we passed this bond measure, and the money's not necessarily used in the way in which it was spoken for. I mean, like, that's a concern that I heard. And I think if we can speak to them, that would be something that could really sort of add strength to whatever it is we're trying to do. I don't know if that's really a question, it's more of a sort of a statement. And then also, you know, go ahead.
And I think, Connell, do you want to talk about like, you know, the type of meetings that you had? They were pretty extensive, I think each site and all those things. You're on mute?
You're muted, yeah. There we go. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So there is an oversight committee involved with the bond. So if the bonds are passed, there is automatically a community oversight committee that has to be appointed to report back to the community. So there is that built into the bonds. We did some community meetings, but probably not, we didn't do extensive town hall meetings during the campaign.
Okay. And then, you know, I think secondarily, I mean, closely related, but secondarily, you know, relaying the results, and again, this is not necessarily a question, it's more of a statement, in terms of if it's decided that we will move forward, sort of having conversations or relaying the results of the last bond, how the funds were used, what were the outcomes, and getting that message, not necessarily in political jargon and, you know, those very hard, complicated numbers, but manageable, you know, sort of bites that the community could sort of digest, I think it'd be very helpful. Because oftentimes when, you know, we're intimately involved in creation of policies and all those things, we tend to relay that message to the public in policy talk, and not everybody speaks policy talks. You know, those are the two comments that I had, so thank you.
Wonderful. And that's our bond oversight committees too. But I also, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Lewis. I think even just naming that something else could be a huge benefit, because it's like bond oversight. Anyways, Trustee Hernandez, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a few questions, and I think it's possible that they may not have answers or easy answers. Do we know any kind of like information, demographics, on how people tended to vote? Do we know any kind of trends as far as what happened with this past Measure T? That can inform us for future decisions?
I can address a little bit of that. I mean, the biggest frustration I think that I had with Measure T was the overall turnout was very, very low. And so if it had, the overall turnout was about 33%, just over 33%, where county-wide, the turnout was 50%. And in a general way, and it's a primary election, so we moved from about 51% up to 54.62%. If we had another 300 people had continued to vote in that, in that process, we would have been successful, we would have been over the 55%. So I think more than anything else is that we just weren't able to turn out our supporters as well as we wanted to. You know, we did a lot of outreach at the schools, but parents typically are most likely to support these things and least likely to vote. And I think that if we went back and looked at actually who voted, you know, we would have a little bit lower turnout than we needed from certain communities.
Yeah, and I guess my, you know, the biggest frustration is the low turnout.
I guess, you know, follow-up question along that line as well is, you know, how did that election fall into maybe larger trends that we might be seeing as far as like bonds in general? Like, are we still seeing that bonds across California for school districts are largely being passed? Was this like an anomaly and something that really was not expected? Are we seeing that being a bigger challenge in California or even nationwide?
A little bit of both. That day was a particularly bad day for schools across the state. So the general elections have turned to be a little bit more, better election dates than the primary elections. So that date, a lot of things actually went down. So that was probably the worst day for schools as far as bonds and parcel taxes, you know, in probably 10, 15 years.
And I would add to that again, Connell's the political expert, but I would add to that, it's very hard to say whether that was a kind of a first step of a broader trend, because the results we've had since have been much smaller because of the pandemic. There'll be a lot of people on the 22 ballot, I believe.
And I guess the last question, and, you know, I guess I'm thinking, you know, what kind of thoughts do we have on whether, you know, you have a 22 ballot, will be something with enough turnout? Since it's not, it's also not like a general presidential election, which has some of the higher turnouts. It's in between that. So I'm wondering if that's still anticipated to be a big challenge. You know, I still think, you know, based off the state of our facilities and things like that, I think sooner is definitely better. But I'm wondering, you know, trying to gauge how big of a challenge that may be.
Yeah, you're definitely correct. You know, in a general election, a presidential election turnout, you're going to be at like 84%. In a gubernatorial election, you're probably closer to 68, 69% turnout. So you're definitely going to have a difference. But it's certainly going to be higher than the 33% or the 50% that you're seeing in the primary elections. So I would say that, you know, with the Prop 39, which allowed the 55% passes, you really are restricted to those two dates. You've got a June date next year, the June primary date, or the November general election date. So if you were, if you were looking, obviously, June is before November. If you were looking at that, I would think that there has to be something that is really more compelling than what we had in the last. I think everything we had in the last bond was very good, but nobody jumped on board like what happened when we were doing it for Antioch High School. You know, when we were doing the bond for Antioch High School, everybody jumped on, and it was very clear and the message. Last March, there was no one E project. It was across-the-board improvements, but there was one, you know, there was no marked E project. I think that if you were going to do something in June next year, there would have to be something where the community is really, really rallying behind it to up that turnout so that you're not just at 33%. Other than that, if there's not something that's overwhelmingly compelling, I think you're better to wait for the November general, because your turnout is still going to be higher.
And I guess I just, one more question, especially now, as you said that, and thinking about, you know, how we might potentially formulate this bond? Because I know the idea between, you know, Measure C and those ones, where we had one area of the district, and then the Measure T was to get the other area. And you might have said this in the presentation, I might just be already forgetting. But like, future projects in this bond, could we now, could we maybe pull from maybe that district, that District 1 area again? Maybe there is a compelling project there still that could be something to rattle the community around and not necessarily have to restrict us to this area that hasn't been touched yet? But maybe, you know, make sure that at least as far as what we're thinking as allocations, maybe does focus a little bit more heavier on that area?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I think this is something that really the board and the district need to consider. You know, the reason we had to do the SFID was because of the MELRUS. You know, and so you had one part of town that gained tax, the other wasn't. But now you have the opposite divide. You know, you have the SFID and the Antioch High School, you know, in the high school area that is now paying a tax, and the other area is not. You know, you could do another tax just in the, you know, SFID number two to make that a little bit more even. Or your option is just simply to go unified and do it district-wide. It's kind of a longer discussion, and I certainly have kind of feelings about that, I'm sure, but I've got feelings about that. But I think that the closer you can get to being a unified district in the long term, the better.
Yeah, because I think my initial gut sense is that there might be a kind of, at least what's coming to mind immediately is projects in the other district that I think would be potentially compelling for the community. But I think you're right, that's a discussion that I think we need to have as a board and think about. But yeah, that's my last comment question.
Yeah, and there's the need, and even back in, you know, in 2008 and 2012, when we did the bonds in that area, it wasn't enough to cover all the needs then. And those needs have not improved in 10 years or so.
Yeah, thank you for all the answers and background.
Trustee Hack, questions, comments? Want to give, you know, your initial thoughts on how you feel about this?
I would suggest this is not our first rodeo in Antioch, in terms of bond issues. And it's not the first time I've heard from you, gentlemen. So I thank you for your honesty, and I thank you for your depth of knowledge. I appreciate it.
Trustee Rocha?
Thank you. I was very disturbed when we lost the last election. I've said it several times, because it was the newer section of town where we were carrying two in this older area. And then this one was lost by just 35 votes, or 36, whatever you want to call it. But people don't seem to understand, and I think this is what needs to be clarified to people, when they think of the school areas out there as new schools, they're not new anymore. But people forget the timing. And they think, oh, they're still the new schools. They forget that these are, what, 20, 25 years old? And it's, needs to be repaired, just like a house needs to be repaired. So I think that's a piece. The other piece is that there was not enough involvement. I know that. And I think that if we go forward, every one of us as board members are responsible to be in the limelight of making sure we get that information out, and that we work on it. Third, that we actually have a committee of school pool people from that area that might live in that area to promote this bond. And the other question I have is, I thought I read that you couldn't have a bond issue in the same time as the election of a school board that's going on. Is that correct or not correct?
That's not correct.
Okay, so you couldn't have it in November, even though you have a school board?
Yeah, they have to, the bonds, the bonds at 55% have to be on a regularly scheduled election.
So here's the other thing in my last. Living in the older section, you'd have to really sell me with the fact that I'm going to have to carry another bond issue. You've got to tell me, how much more time do I have left with these last two? I'm, as a person, I know that you've done what you're supposed to do, but I think I need to know, when is this going to come to rest? And if I go and pick up another one, how, you know, how much is it going to cost me? I'm sorry, my dog is barking.
That's all right. I can provide that information when we talk about resources, you know, down the line, if we follow that path of taking those four elements, one at a time. But the bonds are not going to be totally paid off in the old area of town, or, I mean, in the old area of town until 2050. So there's still a lot of time, but the tax rates are going to gradually go down. And how the bond programs work in, you know, district after district in Contra Costa County, is there are multiple outstanding at one time, and you layer the new payments in on top of the, as the old payments go down, and try to run the program responsibly like that. But we're not going to, I think you're going to put yourself in a bad situation if you say, yep, we're not going to do any improvements to these, you know, to facilities in SFID 1 until all the SFID 1 bonds are paid off. That's too far in the future, and that's not how anyone else does it.
Well, thank you for that information, because I didn't know how long it was going to be. And I agree, I think if we live in this area, that we need to know what else we could fix in our older schools, as well as, again, the new schools that we talk about being new. It's just, and I don't know, it's just very disturbing. Our city has always been very conservative. You go to Pittsburgh, and every one of those schools have been built with a bond issue. But we can't even pass one for 36 votes. And in the new area, when there was no MELRUS, that is disturbing.
Ms. Nella, did you want to, I saw you had your hand raised, so I just?
Thank you, yeah, I did have a question. Last time we went out for, for the bond, we, you provided us information about the bonding capacity of different cities around us, and it clearly showed that that area of Antioch, minus a small sliver that's in Oakley that resides in our district, that they are the only ones in Contra that resides in our district, that they are the only ones in Contra Costa County. I believe Canyon had a little sliver too.
Yes.
That we're not paying any money for their facility upgrades. So is that, do you have any information on that now?
I don't have any of that information to share, but what I will put together is a county analysis. That's, that's, I think, an excellent point. I think the amount of money, the two things to keep in mind is the facilities in Antioch, the facilities in Antioch School District, I think, you mentioned Pittsburgh. If you take some examples for the nearby school districts, if you visited schools in each area, you'd notice the need is greater at the Antioch schools. And the second thing is when we provide the information, you'll see that there have been fewer dollars invested in the facilities in Antioch schools and therefore it's cheaper for the taxpayers. But those two things go together, right? That the fact that the schools need more attention here and the fact that we haven't invested in the past are related.
Have you done any analysis about, I don't know, Melrose hangover, for lack of a better term? I know a lot of people, they were hit pretty hard when they, they came out here for affordable housing and then they were, the redevelopment fees were passed on to them in the form of a Melrose tax. And many people, I think mistakenly believed that those were to keep, keep our facilities upgraded when they were simply to build the facility. So I'm just wondering if you've done any analysis on if that's contributing and maybe some ideas as we move forward for mitigating that.
That, that's something we could build into the, into the poll, right? It's the fact that the public is misinformed about school funding is, I think that's, you're probably right, right? It's how often do you hear, hey, I thought you guys were getting all the lottery dollars?
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you, Stephanie. I think that there was definitely some hangover from that. I think there was a lot of bad feelings coming out of Melrose that wasn't coming out like, hey, we're done with this, let us invest in more. I think that there was a lot of kind of bad feelings about Melrose.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, now I have a couple just quick questions and a few comments. So is it, am I remembering correct, 88 days before that we have to submit the paperwork to the county for it to be, whether it be primary or in November?
Correct.
Yes.
So 88 days is the absolute last day that you can file. So your board acts would have to take place before that.
Yeah, so it's just helpful too to think, you know, in terms of our timeline for this. So if we did want to go out in March, we would need something by the end of December if we wanted to go.
No, it would not, March is not a, it's, if they change the time mark, so it would be June, right?
Yeah, and so in March.
March is the deadline, correct. I have those deadlines I can send to Stephanie.
Exactly. So that was just in terms of timelines, so our new folks kind of know. And I did just want to make a comment too. I echo what trustee Rocha said about being, how disappointed I was and how I think the board could do more. I also just think one of the things is just COVID, you know? I mean, that was happening in the months leading up to that election. But then also, like on the flip side of that, what's kind of cool is that now all ballots are being mailed to everybody. You know, if you're registered, it's going to be mailed to you. And so I think that, you know, could be a really good thing for us because, you know, if you make it easier for people to vote, they tend to vote and they tend to support schools when they do. But then on the other side of that, that I'm worried about, which is why the like kind of three month timeline is helpful for me, is what's going to happen next month with this recall? And then what will eventually, you know, depending on the outcome of that, that's going to greatly affect what November next year is going to look like. So I'm just throwing that out there, it's food for thought for us to think about. You know, we might maybe go down this course and then want to, you know, switch, switch gears depending on how that ends up. And then I also just wanted to say, you know, obviously I said at the beginning, I'm really in support of this. I really think we need to go out for a poll. And I think that a poll is going to be able to help us in so many different ways, like whether, I mean, it's just information that we can use for, I mean, it's going to help guide us so we're not flying blind. And especially with the language too, right? But I really liked, I think, Connell, you had said like this idea of a marquee project. And personally, you know, as an individual board member, I would like to see there be a marquee project again, just because it's more helpful for people to like chew on. But then also I thought it could be really cool, like thinking about this idea of like, okay, you know, the first graduating class at DV was 99? Or was it 01? Somewhere around there, it's just 20 years ago. And I know that there's some really interesting, like old DVDV video footage and like, how cool would it be to like just totally, you know, tell people, hey, this school, see how old that video is? That's the beginning of when this, and it hasn't been, you know, there hasn't been invested in quite to the degree it needs to be, as is evident by our facilities plan. So that's, again, that's just personally, I like the idea of a marquee project. I think it should be DV. I think depending on what happens in the next couple of weeks will depend on like when the timing of this is going to roll out. But I'm really excited about this and I, you know, I was super disappointed last time around, but I do think that, I mean, it was just like the perfect storm of awful things to happen. And then, you know, November, it was just, I was rough. And so, yeah, I think that was my only, so yeah, my, so the days, ballots being mailed out, you know, the result of this recall and the gubernatorial. And then I really liked some of the input to just trustee Dr. Lewis and trustee Hernandez that you guys had about, you know, different language that we're using, looking at some of the trends of who voted in, you know, in March of 2020. I think that that could all be really interesting stuff to look at. So yeah, I mean, I don't have any other, I want to make sure too, is there any other questions or comments from the board?
I want to follow up just on one thing you just made is that, that's something we should monitor is the turnout in the recall election. Because again, just to go with your theory that, you know, everyone is being mailed a ballot, you know, will be able to, again, gives us another data point in the district to look at of voter participation.
Yeah, and then we also just need to think about too, just, I know that on paper, people think that schools are getting like a ton of money, not necessarily realizing that we're just paying things that like, we had to buy the laptops, we had to buy all of these, you know, all the things we needed to be able to go to distant and then coming back. And so, you know, on paper, I think our bank accounts look great, but the reality is we don't have the money that we need to update the facilities to the degree that they need to be updated. And I mean, our HVAC systems in and of themselves, I mean, I rest my case, right? So I think that, but because of them, I think that that will complicate some of the messaging just a little bit of trying to tell people like, well, we don't, we still don't have the amount of money that we need in order to do these updates. So then just things to think about. But then from us, I mean, do we should, do we need to give direction? I know this was just a presentation because we had asked for it, but I don't know.
So I brought this, this is Ms. Romeo again. I brought this forward to the board as an initial presentation. I think I see enough direction or interest in, in bringing forward the next steps of what that would look like. And we, based on some comments, I'm thinking the best time to do that might be after the September 14th election, the board meeting after that. So we have a little bit more information to provide with the board as well. And if there is direction or interest in looking at a opinion survey, then we would bring you information regarding that as well at that board meeting.
Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, as we were, as the conversation was going, I was wondering, what was the opposition against the last bond?
We didn't have any organized opposition against it. I can't remember if there was a valid argument by the tax, by the Tax Party Association, but we really didn't have much, we had no real opposition of it.
Got it, okay. Because I think, you know, I, I am interested in moving this forward, but, you know, in doing that, one of the ways that we could strengthen our position is to say, okay, well, what were the arguments that existed before? And how do we address those so that way, you know, there always be potentially opposition, but at least we can speak to some of the challenges or some of the barriers that people identified in previous.
And I have all the materials that we use, so I can always provide those, you know, at some point, if we want to look through that. I don't think there was an argument against it. I honestly, I don't remember off the top of my head though, but I do not recall there being an argument.
There, there wasn't, there wasn't for that. Uh, trustee Rocha?
There wasn't an argument, but there was some active members that live in that community that put small signs right on the Hillcrest area and campaigned personally on their own. And those little small signs made the decision, I think, to some people because they were saying, we weren't saying the truth.
We did poorly in that area.
We did, and I'm telling you, we did not have the support from that area that we should have had. And I'm sorry, but it is also our people that are there were not involved as they should have been.
Absolutely. Uh, trustee Rocha, but do we understand what, I mean, aside from us, them saying that district wasn't telling the truth, does anybody, and I'm asking for it now, but maybe we identify with those, you know, challenges or what that, what their position was? And maybe we can address those and maybe we win some of those votes.
Dr. Lewis, I will give you personally a couple of names that you can ask them personally.
And you're always going to, you know, no matter what it needs election, you're always going to have people that are opposed to taxes. Here, it doesn't matter what, ever, you know?
I think what you, you suggested in a couple of different ways, Connell, is the problem wasn't that there were too many no votes, it's that there were too few yes votes. Is that right?
Yeah, I think the support was there, we just didn't get it there. And we did poorly in like the Oakley area. I think that there's some confusion there, you know, for example, the people living in Oakley just don't understand why they're in Antioch Unified. The numbers, and there's two precincts that vote in that and they were by far the worst across the board we did.
And yeah, I'll just say that that was the sense that I got too, is that there weren't, it wasn't that there was a bunch of no votes, but rather that there weren't as many yes votes. And I think that, given that we're in districts now as well, I think that could be a huge benefit because then, you know, Dr. Lewis, you could go out to folks in your district, being that representative, and I think carry that message forward a little bit more definitively, I would think. So I, I think that that's just another cool opportunity. Now people are used to voting in districts because that was another thing before is not every resident got to vote on T depending on where you were. So, yeah, there's definitely a lot of, lot of different factors to think about. But, you know, what I like is that we could go down this process and then, you know, next year we might decide it's just not the right time for us. But I think personally, it's worth a shot. And if Associate Superintendent Romeo has enough direction on this.
I do, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Olson and Mr. Lynn for coming here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for everyone's time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next up we have item B under our district reports is our Junior Reserve Officer Training Board, JRTC.
Hi, good evening, board. So at the request of the board, we have this presentation for you about the JRTC. Some of the information, just before we get started, some of the information that is going to be shared is a repeat for those of you that read the board, the Friday board letters that were sent out, but I did want to review briefly for the public. So I'll start with the next slide, Joe. Thank you so much. Just kind of reviewing for the public what the, what the programs, what the JRTC programs boast as to some of the impact that they have. I'll just name a few, I'll call out a few in terms of promoting community service, providing long-term mentors and role models, offering a sense of belonging in family. And so the next slide will show you some of the impact that that has on student data. So here, looking at the number of programs, so this is data gathered from across the U.S. And you can see really clearly, you know, in some of these indicators from students that are not members of JRTC and those that are, and how attendance has improved, graduation rates, discipline is lower, dropout lower, and GPA overall higher. So we did take, our staff looked at all of the branches of the military, starting with the Army. Here's some of the information that we gathered for them. So districts essentially have to make a determination whether they want to go the route of JRTC or the National Defense Cadets Corp, NDCC. And then they submit an application. And then placement of Army personnel. And then, you know, there's always protected space, you'll find that as a theme as we review all of the others. And with this one in particular is a shared cost with JRTC, whereas in the NDCC, if you go that route, districts fully fund that. So with the Air Force, again, there's an application, there's a site visitation that's required. And then if the site is approved in mid-July, there is a rank ordered list of schools that have received a favorable site survey. And then they are placed on that list. And then units are awarded. So there is, is a sort of a formula that they utilize to determine the ranking, eligibility and ranking. And so part of that is the size of the school and the instructor availability, the availability and quantity of facilities and support from the district and the community, Title I eligibility plays into it. And then of course, our location. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about us being in California and that is, that's an advantage for us when it comes to the U.S. Air Force. And then we had to have just space. So with the Navy, very similar essentially. I think one of the major differences is that there needs to be a dedicated space for the field as well as having a, a temperature controlled 1100 foot feet of storage. So that was, that's something that we would have to work on. And then in the Marines, there are only 18 programs in the state of California, most of them being in Southern California. And as of, gosh, four years ago, the Marine Corps has not accepted any applications for new programs. So our recommendation, after reviewing all of that and speaking with a number of people, that we feel that the, the, the Air Force program, the JRTC program with the Air Force would be the best fit for our district. And then with that, the process is there outlined for you. We would have to complete that application. If that application meets their expectations and eligibility, they would come out and do the survey, the site survey. And then from there, if those results are favorable, we would be placed on a waiting list. And so the next slide will tell you some of the considerations. So that we learned that there are 217 schools on the waitlist currently and that the Air Force budget has not allowed for an expansion in the last couple of years. So we could be there for a period of time. One of the things that we also learned though, just as I mentioned before about being in California, because California is underrepresented for the Air Force, we could move up on that list a bit. How much I don't know, but those are the, that's the reality. So from there, I'm just here to answer any questions that I may.
I'm actually just going to pass this over to trustee Dr. Lewis, since I know this is the thing that they've been advancing to kind of lead our discussion.
Yes, so thank you for that. I am interested in, so, you know, it was my understanding that for the JRTC, just in terms of the structure, because I don't know that it was mentioned in the presentation, the school district will be required to fund one teacher. And then in, as a result, the JRTC would supply equivalent officer, I believe, as well as all the equipment and all the uniforms and all of those things for our students. And, you know, I know that you mentioned 1100 square foot dedicated air conditioned space. you know, I know that you mentioned 1,100-square-foot dedicated air-conditioned space, or a temperature-controlled space, I think you said.
That was for the Navy.
For the Navy. So for, for the ROT, for Air Force, what was the dedicated footage? Do we know?
There's not a dedicated, there is a dedicated office space. So they are required to have a dedicated office space. I think they're, with them, they can have a shared field area. So it doesn't have to be dedicated.
Okay. So a classroom might suffice with, a classroom with, you know, that back office might suffice.
Yeah, we'd have to identify that, which I don't think that would be an issue.
Okay.
There's plenty of room.
Okay. So I'm interested to hear the Board, the rest of the Board's opinion, because again, like, I, you know, I made my position around JRLTC clear. You know, I think some of the, some of the data points in terms of student success, again, I'm all about the kiddo. So in terms of student success, graduation rates, and the improvements therein, the leadership development, and all of those things related, I think that that was very clear. And I think that, you know, in terms of the, I just want to make this clear, too. If it's decided that we will move forward with this, and it's either the Navy or the Air Force, neither of those two organizations recruit. So I know that that's a big barrier, particularly when we talk about, you know, African-American and Latino students. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a idea that, you know, those, military comes in and sort of recruits them and all those things. So with those two organizations, that's less of a history. And I'm not saying that that's true for anybody. I'm just saying that's a concern. But with those two organizations, I think that that's less true, because neither of those organizations recruit in the way that, you know, is traditionally thought of. So I'd be interested to hear the rest of the Board's opinion, or any conversation.
And why don't we start, we'll just go alphabetical, classic. Trustee Hack, how do you feel? Navy, Air Force, are you feeling a particular way about this?
Or at all?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I have no objections to the idea. I think if we can work it out where it's viable and not outrageously expensive, and there is a personnel that can do it, and there's enough kids who are interested, why not?
Trustee Hernandez?
So really quickly, before, trusty, so Assistant Superintendent Abara, the only cost to the district, if it were JROTC, would be that dedicated teacher, correct? And the space?
And the space, correct. And the difference between, I will say, the difference between the Navy and the Air Force. So the Navy, or I should say, the Air Force covers the cost of uniforms and equipment, whereas the Navy would not. And I think that that would be an advantage for our students and for our sites.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah. And so just to, like, get a good understanding. I mean, we still have, like, many decisions to make on this as we continue through the process, right? Okay. And like, you know, I think, you know, and I will share, you know, I do have that concern that trustee Lewis shares. And I'm not completely convinced, you know, just because they don't recruit, that they're not also part of a larger military-industrial complex that, that will put pressure on, you know, people of color to go into these spaces. Just because those branches don't recruit, doesn't mean there's not some residual effects from some of the other branches and like just larger, you know, marketing efforts in general. But I do, you know, our students do go into these places, and it'd be great to have them as prepared as possible if they're going to make these kinds of decisions. And so I'm definitely not, not opposed to moving forward with this.
Trustee Rocha?
I should prefer the Marines, but that's beside the point. I was going to ask, who is it that gave us the amount of scholarship recently at Deer Valley?
That was the Navy.
Navy, yeah.
That was the Navy.
$200,000.
Has it been the Navy that's been giving us the most scholarships? Or it's a question as to, who has been giving us quite a few scholarships, I guess is the way I should say it. Is there any one particular branch?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either, but I'm not sure. That might be hard to quantify. I'll give you an example. My son went to Deer Valley High School, Mid-Top High School. He went to the Air Force, and all of his schooling was paid for because he went to the Language Institute. So that is, you know, it's a different kind of unquantifiable amount.
That's kind of what I'm thinking of. I know that when I go to graduations, many times, they'll stand up. They'll, they'll ask their students to stand up who have registered to go into the service. And there's usually one or two or three that have gone in. No, I'm not against it. Like I said, I prefer Marines.
And I'm not against it either. I actually prefer the Air Force. I come from an Air Force family. So, and, you know, I think that any opportunities we could give our kids, I mean, I think that's what trustee Dr. Lewis has been saying. I also really appreciate trustee Hernandez uplifting this idea of feeding into military-industrial complex and these capitalistic systems that often oppress the people who we're trying to help. And so I think that my, I guess the only other thing just to think about is I would like to see, you know, something that is like our college and career plan. And I would just kind of like to see where this fits in next to all of the other stuff. And that's obviously way, way, way down the line. I think right now, it seems like you're only kind of gauging our interests. It sounds like we're really interested. And I think we all want it to be as, you know, economically viable for the district. And if they're giving, I mean, there's a lot of things to explore. You know, I don't think it sounded like we're leaning towards one particular thing, you know, absolute. So, but it did, it does seem like Navy, Marines and Air Force are the ones that are the ones that, but the Marines, they're not accepting any. So it's between pretty much then the Navy and the Air Force. And I think, and do you need any other information from us? Or is there enough to go on? How, like, what?
Will you bring something?
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we will look at the application process and get back to you just kind of with where we are, what we're thinking, because I, I just want to make sure that if we do apply and then we decide, or another Board after us, because it might take a few years, decides it's not the direction they want to go, I want to make sure there's no penalty for applying. So that's just a thought that came into my mind. But that would be a little research we would do. And if there is no penalty for applying, then I would recommend that we go ahead and do that and continue to talk about it.
Sounds good. So, yeah, look into that and then bring it back to the Board, and hopefully we'll be able to get the ball rolling on this.
So Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah. Go.
Really quickly, can we, would it be possible at some point to have some information around, you know, trustee Hernandez and President Householder's concern around that recruitment piece? I don't know how we would sort of identify that, but if possible, because again, the goal is not to go into this like, yeah, well, you know, I kind of like it, but not really. You know, those concerns, you know, I think it's a healthy conversation. And I think that that's something we could really address in, in terms of like, from, from the, from the dice, getting the conversation out so that way we're moving, if we decide to move forward with it, it has the support of the Board, and, you know, those questions are addressed. So.
Yeah, that's really important to bring up, too, is like, if we're limping into it and unsure about it, then like, the community would be lukewarm, too. And so for me, you know, I think I have a good understanding of where like the, you know, studies are at. So my mind would be totally eased if I just knew all the college and career options. And I think we all kind of understand, you know, it's LMC, it's the, you know, but it would just be nice to see it all together. Because I think that that would really mitigate some of, you know, the negative past recruitment practices of some branches of the military. But, yeah, I think if you're giving, it's just options, right? But, yeah, that's just where I'm at with that. If I saw a list, I'd be good. But, yeah, if you guys come across anything, please share that with us, or, you know, that comes up in conversations with folks, I would really like to see that as well.
Will do. Thank you.
Right. So let's move on. Thank you for that presentation to Ms. Abara. So moving right along, Item 7, hearings. We don't have any this evening. Item 8, public presentations. We don't have any this evening. And then number 9, consent items. Is there any to pull, any to vote on separately, or a motion? Also entertain a motion.
I'm, I should move.
Seconded by Dr. Lewis, seconded by trustee Rocha. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve all of the consent items passes 5-0.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cavallaro. Next up, we have our action item, which is Item 10. And we only have one this evening, and it's Amendment to the Employment Agreement for Stephanie Anello, Superintendent, Jessica Romeo, Deputy Superintendent, and, or Deputy Superintendent of Administrative Services, and then Christina Barrow, Associate Superintendent of Educational Services, affectionately referred to as Cabinet for folks. I know some people are like, who, what's Cabinet? I'm like, oh, it's the Superintendent. So, so, yeah, I'm guessing Ms. Romeo might.
President Householder, we do have public comment on this item?
Please, take it away, Ms. Betancourt.
Community member name not provided. Dear Board members, before you tonight is the contracts of the AUSD upper management. Please approve their contracts as AUSD staff, including administrators, work tirelessly through this ongoing pandemic. The Tom Gaines Academy is an excellent choice for our kids. Thank goodness AUSD had the foresight to get this virtual school going. Valerie Luke, President of the Anyock Education Association. Good evening, trustees. For those of you that sat on the school board two years ago, you may, you may remember that a recommendation came before you to combine the Chief Business Official and Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources into one position, with the purpose being that it would provide a cost savings for the district, and that we had been unable to successfully fill the CBO position. I came before the Board to express my concerns about these two positions being combined. I feared that this would be too much work for any person to do, even with the help and support of other Cabinet members. Now, as we are looking to renew these contracts, I would like to once again state that the responsibilities of HR and business should be separated into two positions. Please be clear that this is not a reflection of the individual doing these jobs. A difficult decision was made to deal with budgetary issues in 2019, but at this time, we can afford to split these jobs back apart, and it is in the best interest of our district to do so. The jobs of managing the human resources and the business operations of our district are both too demanding and too important to not each have a designated independent person overseeing them. Please, as you decide to renew these contracts tonight, also direct that a search for one of these two positions should also be posted and filled as soon as possible to bring our district's operations back to full capacity. Thank you. That is the final comment for this item.
Well, thank you for that, Ms. Betancourt. I wanted to ask Ms. Romeo, am I misremembering this, but that was because of a shortage of CBOs, I thought. And I, my understanding was we had, like, someone interim, Chris Lernett, I think, for a while, but we needed to get the job done. So you kind of took both positions. I don't know if you could explain that, if I'm misremembering?
It was actually twofold. At the time, and I want to say it was three years ago, but I could be losing track. We were, the Board will remember, in the middle of doing significant reductions in all areas. And one of the places that we did recommend a reduction was in the Cabinet level to be equal to those that were being felt in other areas, being CSCA, our teaching staff. We had reduced our reading teacher positions within the district. We are still not out of some concerns about our financial issues. And so this evening, what we've brought in front of the Board is our contracts that are simply doing two things. One is the step increase, where all other employees that are in front, move forward on the salary schedule as a step increase is automatic for your upper management, or as Kelly said, Cabinet members. That must be done in a public meeting so that it is transparent. So that is one of the issues that is on the contract. The second one, we have always been, at least in the last five years or so, a three-year contract. This would simply maintain a three-year contract for those of us in Cabinet. We all do have a no cause termination clause. I believe for the Superintendent, it's nine months, and for Ms. Abara and myself, it's a six month. So I would ask the Board to approve these contracts this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you. So if we, we could theoretically take Ms. Luke's suggestion, right, and kind of give direction to?
You can give direction, but you can't take action on that this evening. It's not in front of the Board as to what we're going to do moving forward. I would ask the Board to, as I have before, you've asked me to put together something on a plan, and that would have to be part of that plan and what the costs are over a three-year period to do that.
Very great. Thank you for that.
Yes, you can, you can at any time decide that you want to bring in additional, you know, actually, positions are proposed by the Superintendent, but at any time, changing these contracts does not prevent the ability to add an additional position such as a CBO.
Wonderful, because I am concerned about burnout, you know? And this was, we did this pre-COVID, and I think, you know, we've kept our heads above water, but I want to, you know, I'm just concerned about our longevity as a district. But let me just go around and do a round robin in terms of questions, just because I did think that those public comments, there's a lot to chew on. So I'm going to start off with Dr. Lewis, and then I'll go trustee Hernandez, and then Hack and Rocha.
Just for questions and comments around the item before.
Item before us, and it could be in response, I mean, I'm just interested in what the AEA President had suggested, and that's where I'm leaning towards. Yes, and let's look at a CBO, but.
Right.
Well, it could also be somebody in HR. So what I'm going to ask the Board this evening, what's in front of you is our contracts. If, if there's going to be directions somewhere else, that can't be a vote that you take this evening. And there may be recommendations of how additional help can be done differently.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Based on what Jessica just said, this item talks about the pay raise for these three positions effective right now. The other issue is that Valerie mentioned is something that we need to do separately in the future. So I think the item we have right now before us is to accept the agreements with these three people who are in those positions at this moment in time this evening, and then have further discussions after that's decided, in my opinion.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I just had two quick questions. One, are these increases here essentially equivalent to what we had for AMA?
No, these are, every salary schedule, whether you're a teacher, a classified, a principal, or in our instance, a senior management, has a salary schedule. So the raises that you saw with AMA and so forth is the percentage increase that was for the 2021 school year. Every employee moves forward on this, on the salary schedule as far as steps, until you get to the top step. This approval tonight of these contracts would place both Ms. Anello and I, I believe, will then be on step six, if you look at him, and Ms. Abara, moving forward on that salary schedule, I believe, to step five. So all other employees, other than senior management, their salary steps happen automatically on July 1. There is no action by the Board. That's an automatic thing that happens. Ours, we bring forward to the Board so that it's done in public, and that the Board has to approve it by law, rather than be automatic. And that happened about, oh, seven, eight years ago for all public agencies for senior management.
Okay, great. That answers that question. And then the other question I had is, is it standard practice to, to like, increase the length of the contract, to maintain a three-year contract when these things happen? the length of the contract, to maintain a three-year contract when these things happen?
That's very common. There are some places that have four. There are some that have two, but the majority of them are three-year contracts.
And I guess I'm having trouble understanding functionally what the purpose is of having like a three-year contract out that we renew like every single year potentially, and just maintain at like this three-year level?
Yeah, because you are, one, having some stability in your district, so that is one of the things that oftentimes they want to do. But if you wait on a three-year contract for three years, then your, your folks don't know what's going to happen, and you don't know what's going to happen. So there's not that sense of stability going forward in the district from either side to, you know, because this is our, our rights. Teacher and classified employees and even management has certain dates that they have to tell you, but they maintain their employment in the district. For senior management, we're on a contract, and without that contract, then, you know, we're going to go out and look. That's kind of the thing, if you don't know what your stability is for the next year. So that's one of the reasons for a three-year, and that's why most districts have employment contracts for their top management.
Okay, and then one tiny follow-up question to that. Is there any kind of like monetary piece linked to the length of that contract? Because I know with other contracts and other industries and things, you know, a three-year contract that's terminated early sometimes has to be paid out for those three years, and as those years go by, then that amount goes down, but I don't know if that's something that, that happens here, or how that works.
So by law, your superintendent can only have nine months within her contract for termination for no cause. And that's what's in the contract in front of you. For both Ms. Abara and I, there is a six month, so at any time during that three years, if the board decided that they did not want to move forward with our services, they have a six month, but you're never obligated to pay for the entire three years, unless there's less than six months or nine months left on the contract.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Trustee Rocha?
I don't have any questions, so I'm ready to vote on it.
I'm ready for your motion.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to move forward with the item eight, and that would be, it says amendment to employment agreements, and that's would be the motion, I believe.
All right, so the motion made to accept this amendment by trustee Rocha, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis, and so can we, before we, I call for a roll call, I do just want to reemphasize, just so folks know, I am interested in thinking about the redistribution and getting another superintendent in if possible. Obviously, that's not what we're voting on, but I just want to say that. So with that, if Ms. Cavalero could please call the roll for us?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
No.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes, and my comment would be that I believe it's up to our superintendent to come back with some ideas if financially we can go forward. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, the motion to approve the employment amendments for Stephanie Anello Superintendent, Jessica Romeo Deputy Superintendent Administrative Services, and Christina Barra Associate Superintendent Educational Services passes four to one with President Householder voting against.
Thank you, and then thank you for that extra comment, or that supplemental comment or reminder, trustee Rocha. Good to underscore. So, moving on. Section 11, which is our items for information, discussion, and/or action. So first up, in-person board meetings. I think this is self-explanatory, but trustee Hack, take it away. Oh, sorry, you're muted still. Oh, no, you're still muted.
There?
Yep.
Okay, fair enough. No, seriously. You know, I asked downtown Christine Todd how many students we have and how many employees we have, and she came up with fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight students, seven hundred and ninety-five teachers, classified seven forty-six, AMA eight hundred eighty-six. So basically, we got seventeen thousand people in this district. And they are all in schools, face-to-face every day. I think as a board, we need to mirror that same thing too, to meet face-to-face. Yeah, we can wear masks, the kids wear masks, we can wear masks. There are locations in this district where we can sit very comfortably with some people in the audience. I, I just think we need to get back as an example to all the employees in this district that we are meeting face-to-face, because they're faced, they're forced, not forced, but they're meeting face-to-face every day. We should hear what they're doing every day. That's my thought.
Um, I mean, so are you just looking to kind of see where we're at? I mean, because obviously, there's all sorts of legal, like, kind of elements to this too that we would need to look into, but trustee Hack, are you more just so looking to see where we're at with that? Like, how we feel about?
I do not have the authority to tell you what you got to do. But if, if we have four or five people who are interested in meeting face-to-face, then that probably would be a direction. If there's one person like me, the other four disagree, that would probably be a direction too. So I just opened up the topic for discussion.
Um, so I don't feel comfortable. Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Ah, you know, I think it's, ah, I don't know, I, I mean, I have mixed feelings because, you know, I, I do understand the, it's, it's a complicated issue. I've been going to work since the beginning. I work in healthcare, and, you know, while I'm not providing direct service, we still are under that umbrella, and we've been going since the beginning. So, you know, my position is, you know, obviously, I've been going to work. We could, but I also understand that there are people with complicated health issues. You know, you know, this past, over the past week, I've lost two people to COVID. You know, two friends, like, two childhood friends of mine, you know, I lost to COVID. And I, so I don't know, I'm torn. I'm torn. So I don't have a firm position either way. I mean, I do think, you know, to trustee Hack's point, I think there is conversation and relationship building and a number of other things that happen in person that doesn't happen, you know, over the net. But I also, you know, fresh today, I got the news that another friend passed from COVID, so I'm, I'm sort of torn that way.
I'm very sorry to hear about your loss, Dr. Lewis, and thank you for still being here with us and for sharing. So I'm going to ask trustee Hernandez, and then trustee Rocha, feel free to go after that.
Yeah, I think if you would have asked me in June, I would have been all for it, but I think the timing of changes with the COVID Delta variant have very much shifted my thoughts on this. I think, you know, it's, it's a completely different thing for a board to meet in person than to have students in classes. And when it comes to COVID-19, I think we need to be making weighted risk decisions. And, you know, when it comes to the education of our students, it's imperative that they're in person. We know that they benefit a lot more from being in person, that it's, it's a key piece to their education. Whereas the duties that we do as board members, it's not a key piece to our ability to govern, to meet in person. And so I think, you know, to meet in person at this time right now would be a risk that we really don't have to take. You know, when we're taking, when we're talking about students in schools, there is a huge benefit, a huge reason why we're doing that, and that's how I kind of think and approach the problem. And then as well, there's a lot of, you know, differences when it comes to the epidemiology and the disease process when it comes to, you know, us who are adults here, and then children, we know that it's less likely to be transmitted amongst children, that the, the disease process is different, that there's all whole sorts of different factors that make students in school with, you know, one teacher much different than a room of adults all gathering together. And so that's kind of the thoughts that I have on this. You know, I, I definitely would love to meet in person eventually. And again, you know, when we were winding down, I think the timing seemed really good in June. But I think as things have changed now, I think we got to look at the situation, you know, day by day, and as an evolving thing, and I think right now, based off what we know and what's happening, I think not meeting in person is the best decision right now.
Trustee Rocha?
I really don't seem to have a problem with it. And I'll tell you why, because I'm getting my booster shot tomorrow, so is my husband, so I feel like I'm going to be covered. So it's up to the group. I can go either way.
So it sounds like a mixed bag. I'm the only firm no.
Thought I was pretty firm in my no.
Oh, okay, okay, cool, yeah.
So, there's an Anello, isn't there a time period where our ability to work, do it this way is going to expire, and I want to say the end of October?
It's actually September fifteenth or September thirtieth, Kelly, you can jump right in here. But it's coming up fairly quickly, and there's, oh, September fifteenth is the governor's thing. So I think it's September thirtieth, and I think, depending on who you talk to, that, and depending on how September fifteenth goes, whether or not that will be extended or not, and where we are with this. My only thing that I have shared with staff, and I'm not trying to sway your opinion in either way, because I'm open to meeting in person or online, is the idea of a stable cohort. And meetings of the public aren't necessarily stable as they are in schools. So that's just one thought. We will, there's also a lot of push on the anti, let them breathe. And so we've seen in neighboring districts that it's been a little bit difficult to manage some adult behavior in board meetings as far as masks go. So again, I'm not trying to sway you in, in either direction. I'm happy to do whatever the will of the board is.
So trustee Hack, what if we brought this back up for discussion at the next two board meetings to touch base? The next two, September ninth, I think, and then the twenty-fourth, and that'll give us time to continue to see how we feel. Before, before the, like, you know, because I'm assuming we would have to make a decision if we wanted at that point, if the, once the executive order expires, we would, I'm guessing, have to make a decision. Does that sound okay to you?
The reality is, the majority of the board has spoken. Yeah, okay, sure, that's fine. I brought it up, we'll revisit it.
All right, so we will revisit that next month during our meetings, just to touch base with how folks feel. Yeah, like, two could go either way, two no's, one yes. So we'll just check back in, because that's how this pandemic works. Okay, so next, we have traffic signs near campuses. Trustee Rocha, I have been thinking about this so much. Thank you for bringing this forward. Take it away.
Well, you know, I'm not sure what the sign would look like, but this has happened in the past, and that's because I live right by Sutter. And I usually go across to get over to Hillcrest. And sometimes I forget about the time that the children are letting out. The line goes all the way past Chichibu Park, and I know this happens on a regular basis. I'm sure Mr. Hack is aware of it, because it's on his street. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't be at least mentioning something to the public in some format, a sign of some sort. Another one would be Mission School, because I'm around there too. I don't know about the other schools, because I'm not familiar with their, I'm only thinking of elementary schools, not junior, not the high schools or the junior highs. Elementary, because they seem to be in, in housing areas. And sometimes those streets are blocked off when you have a lot of families dropping off students. That's what I'm thinking of.
Marsh is a nightmare. I just drove down that. Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Lone Tree Elementary has its challenges, so does Park. So, you know, trustee Rocha, I think, you know, hearing that conversation, you know, in a couple of different forums, you know, we are on the city council, not city council, city school board committee, and hearing your thoughts around it. Would it be possible for us to either do it through this board or through the city council, or some, have somebody to do sort of a traffic analysis, analysis to see how we can redirect traffic? So that way, we can identify either alternate routes or something, and then that could also, you know, to your point, identify different key, key points where we can put signs to sort of curb some of that traffic? Would that be something that, that you would be interested in?
I, I'm really, really thinking just of signs, not redirecting traffic, because it's going, it's always been established. Every school has figured out how they can get children in and children out. They've got their own traffic patterns. But the unsuspected person that doesn't have a child in school tends to come down that main, the streets that are the closest, the ones that I mentioned, and then they're stuck in traffic. And I'm sure it can be very irritating, but if there was a, a sign put maybe five, I don't know, down at the stop sign or before you even get that far, reminding people that the school lets out at a certain time. That's all I was thinking of, just to help out.
Got it. I misunderstood. Okay, that makes sense.
And what I like about this too, trustee Rocha, I've been thinking a lot about it, is because I feel like, to me, it would, like, if we go out and we do, you know, put these signs up, then when we tell the city council that they need to get us crossing guards, it, I don't know, to me, it feels like then we're both kind of, you know, trying to, you know, take responsibility for our own part in it. But I really, I like the idea, trustee Dr. Lewis, that you just said too, of just having some type of a study done so that we could see, because my, the only issue that I could see in terms of where to place the signs is where, like, are a majority of people going, you know, southbound on G or northbound, you know, so I think we could be kind of strategic. But I mean, also, I think that, I don't know, I would just be interested to see how much one of these signs even costs and what that process is.
Can I add that you would have to have them both ends, because in Sutter, Sutter, you have both ends coming in, and it blocks that whole street. I'm not sure about the other schools. I'm not sure that it requires a study. I think we all know which schools are the ones that are impacted. I wasn't expecting a big, I mean, just a sign. It could be even a cloth sign or something that you could drape somewhere, and just to remind people. As to, the crossing guards, I've got to tell you, those belong to the city. I'm sorry, because I was there once, and I know when they were taken away.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's like a mix of traffic safety is all I'm trying to say. I think that there's different, different things, but trust, I almost said trustee Anello. Ms. Anello, it looks like you've been wanting to say something, and I keep.
I, I did. I'm happy to do a cost analysis, even in preparation for our AUSD City School Subcommittee, just so what would it cost? So that we can start having that conversation there, if it's, you know, I don't think it would be astounding. But, yeah, definitely. And then the city does have the ability to levy fines, which the school district does not for, for traffic mitigation. And at our last, why do I get too far off this? So I'll, I'll say, I'll stop there, so I'm not polluting the conversation. But yeah, I would be happy if the board would like just to sort of do a cost analysis.
I'm, I'm interested. It looks like trustee Rocha, do we have at least one other person who's interested in a cost analysis so that we?
If you go by any elementary school in the morning, and in the afternoon, within two, three hours, it's packed. You don't need a huge study. You can ask anybody in any of the schools, they can tell you exactly where you need to put the signs.
Yeah, so let's do that cost analysis, because when you say levying the, the fines, it'll be on the sign, it'll say, you know, violators are subject to whatever, whatever fine. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Sorry, trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I'm much more interested in the angle that trustee Lewis was approaching with this. I think if we care about the traffic that's going on here, we need to find ways to mitigate that and see what options there are to, you know, either increase maybe public transit services there, you know, look at different, you know, traffic flow options. I think that, I think those are some of the things that maybe trustee Lewis was alluding to that I think are much more important, because I'm not fully convinced that signs like that will do all too much or anything to really address anything. I mean, and I'm going very anecdotal with this in the sense that, like, I know what schools not to drive past. I don't have, you know, kids that go to these schools, but I know, you know, don't be near these schools around two, three PM on most days. And I think most people know that, and I think those signs would only help people who are not familiar with the area, and I would argue that you're not going to have very many people who aren't familiar with the area already that are driving through those areas. So really, you have a very small subsection, I think, of people who they might possibly help. And I would argue that even those people might go ahead and go through that area anyway, because they don't pass by very much anyway, so they'll deal with it. So they'll deal with the traffic, you know, that time that they're passing through. So, you know, I'm not super convinced that the signs are going to be all that helpful. But I think, you know, in the root of that idea and in the root of this discussion is a really great discussion, a really great idea of, you know, how do we begin to talk about and address some of these traffic issues, which clearly we've all universally experienced at these different sites?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I think that a part of the cost analysis would be, what does it cost to do a study, right? When, I mean, I, I mean, and I could have totally been misinterpreting like that. But, you know, what are the signs even cost? You know, to obviously aid us in our understanding, but then also to aid the city school district Subcommittee or Standing Committee? But also, you know, I would be very interested, because I, I mean, I think that there, you know, there are a lot of things, like you're saying, trustee Hernandez. I mean, like SB, what, SB ninety just passed yesterday, which is going to be around mixed-use housing development. And there's all these sorts of interesting pieces of legislation that are coming down to where us knowing where traffic is would benefit us potentially when we're trying to partner with folks. So, I mean, I would just be, yeah.
I think, I'm pretty sure I can say this with, still sticking to the item, but at our last AUSD City Subcommittee, we did request that the city do a traffic study. And we offered to pay for half of that. So I will follow up to see if there's a status update. I can share that.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then to, if, you know, some of the pieces around transit availability, transit options, I think I would be very interested in seeing as well. Like, is there, you know, on G Street in front of Marsh, is there a bike lane? I don't, I can't actually recall that right now. But I think that that would help, I'm guessing, you know? So yeah, just some of those transit pieces, which I'm assuming would be a part of a traffic study.
All right, I think I have direction, which is to do a cost analysis and then get a status update of where the city is with the traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, item C, site supports regarding unhoused residents. Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Yeah, so I know this is probably, I mean, this is, this is going to be a complicated conversation. You know, for a number of reasons. One, we have unhoused and unsheltered and housing insecure students in our district. So any decision we make, we definitely want to hold their positionality and their person in our conversations. However, you know, I've noticed that, and this is, you know, I'm getting this from the public. I know that the principals are working hard to address these situations when they happen on campus. But I've gotten several public comments. And again, you know, as I said, I get stopped in the supermarket quite a bit. And over the last couple of weeks, there have been several parents and citizens or baby residents of ANIAC, I'm assuming, who have stopped me in the halls and they've complained about, and I, without naming the school site, because I don't want to throw any principal or any site specific or under the bus. That's not the intent of this. There have been increasing unsheltered folks making, creating living spaces on school grounds. And I think that, you know, there's a number of different things. Now, in full transparency, I will admit that I do have a bias, because when I was a kid, there was a situation where someone who was unhoused had an episode. It was drug, we later found out that it was drug infused, induced. But they caused harm to a friend of mine. So again, I will be completely transparent and say that. However, you know, when we're thinking about school safety, when we're thinking about these conversations around creating an environment for kiddos to be safe, you know, I think that this is something we need to consider. So this was the impetus for me bringing this forward. You know, the conversations with public, you know, with residents and the people in the community, my experience as a child also, and seeing people on making sort of living spaces on campus. So that's kind of what pushed me to have this conversation and to bring it to the board.
So Dr. Lewis, and thank you for bringing this, because I even just saw on Nextdoor, it can be an echo chamber sometimes, but some stories, right? And, you know, we want to make sure our kids are safe. I'm just curious though, are we thinking, or is your thought process something in the short term? Or are we thinking more long-term? Because to me, just hearing you talk, I think that this would be perfect as a part of our, as a part of an ongoing or larger safety conversation. So we have our comprehensive safety plan for the district. I think that this, you know, something around, you know, non-school affiliated people on campus. I don't know, I just feel like it could potentially fit into that conversation. But I just want to make sure that, I mean, I want to honor what you kind of had in mind for this.
Well, I think it's a both hand. You know, if there's a situation where somebody's, you know, creating space for sleeping and things like that on campuses. You know, we all, we definitely want to make sure that we're supporting principals and give them some guidance to say, okay, well, these are the steps you can take and these are the supports that are available. And then long, longer term, developing a plan for, to your point, the school site safety and having that rolled in. Uh, trustee Rocha, sorry.
Matt Chair, I'm concerned. Are we talking about what area? Are we elementary, middle or high school? Because I know the seniors, senior high schools have personnel that goes around there and is supervising the area. Middle school, I'm not sure if they have personnel, but I think they do. But I don't know about elementary. Can you explain that?
I mean, my understanding was that this was in response to folks, especially over the pandemic, like making more, you know, kind of residents in our school sites just because of the coverage. I'm not sure if it was specific to elementary, middle or high school. I thought this was more so like a hangover from distance learning.
Well, well, again, are we talking about people that are on our school sites making their housing there?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, wouldn't we be aware of it so that we would be putting something, a stop to it? I mean, superintendent, isn't that, I mean, part of our plan? I mean, certainly, if our custodian sees something, they're going to turn it in. And then they're going to have the police come in or somebody come in and take care of it. Am I wrong?
No, that's correct. I think in thinking about this, you know, that we haven't had a lot of training on how, you know, someone's having an episode of something that we don't quite understand. You know, maybe having some of that training for custodians and adults. And then back to the AUSD Standing Committee with the city, it would be a great conversation to have there, because ultimately, you know, they're having their own plan for how to deal with the unhoused residents. But I would, I would suggest, without trying to sway you too much, that we take this back to that Standing Committee. That would be a very, I think, a very generative conversation. But in the short term, you know, having us look at maybe just, how, if someone's having a mental episode, how do you address them in a way that keeps everyone as safe as possible? That isn't training that we necessarily have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, superintendent. I wasn't thinking of a mental issue. I thought it was just a whole person that was staying overnight or sleeping there, making arrangements. I wasn't thinking of the other, because of course, there is a team at the county level that will come in and take care of that.
Yes, absolutely.
So they're, they're, oh, I'm sorry, not to cut, I'm sorry, go ahead, superintendent. So I know that, I know specifically one institution, and again, the goal is not to throw anybody under the bus, so I'm not going to mention the site, where law enforcement is called, the person is removed. And then out of anger, you know, and I see superintendent Anello nodding her head, because I think she's familiar with what I'm about to say. They'll come back and retaliate against that site, maybe break a window or something like that. And then the cycle continues. So, you know, it's more than just sort of responding to, it's, it's also responding to that situation. I think that's an important training to have, superintendent Anello. But it's also how, like, what supports do principals have? Because again, having someone leave that instant and then creating sort of a structure or some, something in place to keeping folks, and again, I don't want to punish folks. It's not the goal to punish. And I'm, I'm hesitant to sort of say that. But to keep our kiddos safe, because we don't know what's going to happen. And to prevent folks from making residents on, on school sites is more of the, more of the conversation that I was hoping to have.
And this is Ms. Romeo. We have had incidents throughout AUSD. We do follow the proper procedures. But we have had, as Dr. Lewis mentioned, some vandalism that occurs from that. So the, as we see the cases, we can do that. But I do think having a long-term plan with the city or, you know, as we go through, because there, there are consequences to that. And I think that's what they're asking, what you may be hearing from the public. Just as there are people who have made homes because they need to at other places within ANIAC or.
Absolutely. And again, in full transparency, I, I understand my, my bias because of the experience that I had as a, when I was a kid myself.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that there, from the way that this conversation is going, there seems to be quite a few different kind of ways that we can address this. One of the ones being, I mean, you know, city school Subcommittee, that's, I think, advancing that and just like to holding firm that we must be a part of those conversations. Because core sometimes, you know, they take forever to get out here. And that's the outreach program that trustee Rocha was mentioning. The other thing is that, I mean, I'm really just thinking that like, you know, and I don't know how often if we update our site or district-wide safety plan. But I really think that this could be a part of it, because something that you said earlier, Dr. Lewis, that was interesting. I think we had a public comment about it before too. It's like, what resources are there? You know, I know that there are like things out there. But, you know, do we have one that's like AUSD, you know, vetted? And I think that that could be something short-term. Because I'm also thinking, like, if a principal is having an ongoing issue, how, is there a way that like, that issue can be, I don't know, that we could do something more specific? I don't know, to help them. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement that this feels like it would be better suited to the, to the school city Standing Committee. And I think because, because the, the, the way I look at this problem, to me, the root problem is housing and then the services that unhoused individuals need. And I think those are better addressed in partnership with the city. Because I imagine, you know, some of the, the more powerful preventative ways is ensuring that people, you know, have housing, that people have access to services, that, you know, we partner with local homeless organizations that are already equipped and dealing with people in this community may already have a relationship with some of these individuals and be able to de-escalate these things in a way that's a lot more a long-term preventative than maybe any of, you know, maybe some of the, the short-term solutions that I think come to mind immediately. So I think it makes a lot more sense there in my mind.
And then I also too, superintendent Anello, you talking about trainings. I am really interested in that as well. And we had, there was a comment about professional development opportunities. I don't know if this could be something to do a little research into, because I think that that could be, I mean, I think that could be useful in a lot of scenarios. And could just be something that we could do more, you know?
Well, at the very least.
Oh, no, you muted yourself.
At the very least, I think there is a lack of understanding sometimes about unhoused residents and, you know, the, just having that better understanding of maybe what's really going on, even though we might not know with each individual. Building empathy, all of those things, I think, are of interest to me.
So then, do we feel like clear with this? Is really, let's park this conversation back in the committee, bring it back. But then, you know, in the intermediary, look at some empathy trainings potentially.
And also, I would really like to have conversations at whatever point to make sure that the principals are aware of whatever resources are available. You know, because ultimately, they're on the ground and teachers as well. I mean, but, you know, we want to make sure that those folks on the ground understand that they're supported and the resources that are available, you know, they're aware of, so.
Thanks for that, sure. Okay, great. So I think more on this TBD. So we'll check back in on this once you all have a chance to talk about it in your committee. And so the last up, data supports. I want to just make this easy for folks, what I'm thinking. We've talked a lot about ADA, average daily attendance, all this fun data stuff. Rather than belate the point, I think we're all interested in it. So I would suggest just an update in a presentation, like we've, you know, already had an interest in requesting more of, just to learn a little bit more about what our data, what our centralized data systems are. And then us to be able to talk to, I don't know if it's Mr. Cannon, I don't know if, or who, you know, who's like kind of, probably a couple of different people. But the person primary responsible for our data, I would like to be able to hear from them and ask them questions, if that would be agreeable to the board. That way, we, I mean, because we could talk about this, but I'm pretty sure we all like believe in data. But I think we just need to know what we're working with in the district. Does that sound okay to folks? Or, I mean, I'm totally down to talk too. Okay, I got head nods. So would it be okay to see, does that make sense to you, superintendent Anello? I'm also open to suggestions of like, if this should be in two different presentations? I don't know. Actually feel like this might even be Ms. Avara. I don't, either one of you.
I think there's probably a lot of data that we keep in CalPads and in other things that live in H R, that live in business, that live in the educational services world. So with your permission, what I'd like to do, if the board would like such a presentation, is sort of meet back with staff and kind of come up with a proposal that I can put in the Friday board of, hey, we're going to do a report coming up, if that would please the board.
Yeah, and I mean, trustee Dr. Lewis?
You know, I think one of the larger conversations, or maybe, maybe this is a little premature. But, you know, I know there's a lot of data that sort of gets filtered out to the County Board of Education. You know, there's a number of different places where information sits outside of the district as well. And I think, you know, I've been giving this a lot of thought. And one of the things that I'm really sort of hoping, because the last time I said a centralized data platform, and I know a lot of that information rests in Ares as well. What I think that I'm asked, actually asking for, what I'm hoping to get is a portal, right? So that way, we have access to all of those information things and we can sort of go in and, and sort of have access to all that information. Not necessarily clients, students, I'm not at work, not client-specific, but student-specific, not, not that level. But just aggregate level data, so that way we can splice it to see, okay, well, what's happening in the district? And we can have that portal, sort of tap into all of those different databases and compile that information. That's kind of what, you know, what, after thinking about it, that's kind of what I'm hoping to develop or have the district develop.
I think that that's, that makes sense. So you're thinking, I'll go to you in a second, trustee Hernandez. So like, like CalPads, like what, you know, the difference, the different standardized testing, but plus our ADA, plus these, okay, that makes sense to me.
And then also, you know, that would help. If, you know, I know we had a conversation about a grant writer. If, if, if that was the route we were going to go, that grant writer could then use that portal to justify whatever grants we're going after as well. So it'll serve multiple functions, because right now, Ares, even if I were to get in, because I'm not a principal or I'm not, you know, there's limited information that I'll have access to, so, yeah.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I think, I, I guess I just want to share some of my thoughts on what I envision when I think about like data and the kind of information that I'd like to get from a presentation is, you know, because I think about, you know, what I really want to know is, you know, not just like what data do we have, but like who's using it and how do we use it? Because I'd like to know things like, you know, which, what data do teachers use? And how do they use it in their everyday job? Do they use it in their everyday job? What kind of data and places do administrators use? You know, what kind of data do even our students or parents have access? And how do they use that? Because what I'm interested, you know, like what my objective in, in, in looking at this would be, when I'm thinking about this problem is, you know, where are, is there gaps that maybe need to be filled in? Where is there information that would be really useful for, you know, teachers to have, you know, updated in real time? And where is it that teachers have information that maybe like lags by quarter, by months, that maybe should be, you know, real-time data that they should be getting? And, you know, trying to fill in some of those gaps for administrators, teachers, parents and students to make sure, you know, that they have the ability to use this data as a tool? Because I know that, you know, in a lot of places, there, there's data everywhere, you know? And in the way that the world is now, data exists literally in every nook and cranny. But it really comes down to, are we using it and how's it being used? uh, data exists literally in every nook and cranny, but it really comes down to, are we using it and how's it being used?
Thank you, I really, yeah, I think that that's another great question. It's like not only like what is being collected, but how is it being used? I think that that's another great secondary question. And that's why I was like, maybe this is Avara, maybe this is, you know, like it could be a couple of different people. Um, so yeah, Trustee.
I have a thought. I'm not sure I'm understanding what's going on here, but I think it's uh somewhat inappropriate for board members to have access to da- data banks in the district. I think we can certainly access uh the three ladies who are staying here tonight and the other people in those departments saying, if we have this question, they can give us this information. I feel uncomfortable as a board member, or board members in general, going into data banks on their own, check out things without the hired employees knowing who's checking out things. I, I just, I'm just uncomfortable with that myself personally.
Trustee Rocha?
Um, I'm thinking the same. I'm thinking the same way as Mr. Hack, because I'm thinking to myself, why would you want, I mean, it's one thing to know where all these things are. And if you want something, you get it from the superintendent. But why do you personally have to have the portal to go in and, and find out all this information? And I, I, that's what's puzzling me.
Trustee Hernandez?
And I'm happy to, to share my perspective, um, because I don't think it's inappropriate at all. I think, you know, it's a tool that can help us do our jobs as board members because it's literally giving us the information of what's going on in our school district. Uh, you know, and I, I think to clarify, you know, one piece that, that may be potentially unclear is, you know, this would be aggregated data. I, 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 it wouldn't be helpful for me to get like individual student data and be able to, um, you know, identify students with the de-identified data is more than good enough. But you know, when we think about, you know, what are our priorities as a board and what kinds of things um should we be focusing on? Uh, what kinds of things are happening in our school district? This data could be very important in making sure that we're putting attention on these things. And I think, you know, I, I don't understand, uh, at least from my point of view, about why we need to have an extra intermediary every time that we need to have data. Um, you know, every time that we want to request, having to go to someone, uh, you know, and they go through the same steps that we could just go through and click, uh, when everyone's like very busy and working on lots of things. Um, I think this data can just kind of help us do our jobs better as board members. So that's kind of the perspective that, that I have uh when it comes to that.
And then I'll give you one example too, um, in, in what, what's missing for us? Because I've obviously been like a huge data person uh, uh, in my tenure on this board. But one thing that we are missing is our ability to kind of play, play around with the data, so to speak. So we have the data, the California Schools Dashboard, but it's like, it's essentially just images, right? Like I'm not able to see, okay, well, in SID number one, thinking about the bond conversation we had earlier in the night, what are the three, you know, schools in that area that, that uh, you know, whatever, whatever the question is, have the, the best math scores or the most truancy? And it would allow us to then, you know, if I want to just look at elementary schools in Southeast Antioch, I could do that. You know, because the argument can be like, oh, I could look at Deer Valley, I can look at individual sites. But then comparing those, comparing populations, comparing subsets, so just being able to play around with it, you know, a little bit more, um. Yeah, sorry, Trustee Dr. Lewis, she wanted to say something. So that was just an example for me, bond could help us do our job better.
I was trying to, to un, un, unmute for whatever reason it would allow me. Uh, so now, just, just so we're clear, it's, we have access to a lot of this information already. It's just in disparate places, you know, and I don't know that we all understand where to get them. Um, where, where to get this information. I have access to, you know, stuff, for example, for work, uh, because at work, you know, there are kiddos that come from Antioch to Alameda. So I have access, I mean, there's, we can get the information already, it's just in a lot of different places. And then to be able to say, okay, well, this is all the information out there and these are some of the trends with the students that we serve. You know, I think that could be very helpful. Um, you know, because if the goal is for us to create an environment where students are successful, one of the ways in which we can do that is understanding what, where they are and what their experiences are.
Yeah, and just to add another point to that, is like, you could go on Data Quest and I could download all these EXCELs, but my computing power is not as great as I would like it to be. So I think at least when I, when you say centralized system or portal, Dr. Lewis, what I'm thinking about is something that's web-based too, so that we're not having to take up a lot of memory. Because I, I mean, I, I mean, I know that some of us, I think on this board, um, can pull data and create certain types of visualizations with it. But like, yeah, I don't want to have to be a researcher all the time. I just want something pretty to be able to take a glance.
Do you mind if I jump in? So I actually pulled up our Ares, um, the data dashboard analytics that we have. And I think all of the information that you're looking for in all of these places is already there. Um, I think the question would be um, is around the student information. So, because that's actually a, so when, when you open it up, because I have it open right now, one of the things that you can click on is the student piece. And so I would have to explore whether or not we could make that read-only and that that piece isn't something that would be allowable. Um, but I think maybe the easiest way is to try to print, um, because there's a way to print this as well. Um, you know, so that you do have that, the, the data picture. Because it covers all, I think, all the topics that you're, you would be interested in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't want access to student client, uh, I see, same client, student level data, I don't.
No, I, I know that, but it's, it's included because it's something you can drill down into. So we would want to make sure that that, you know, I, I just, there's, there's ways to give you this in, in a print form um, that would be easy enough for us to do um, without.
The challenge with the print form is I can't manipulate it. You know, so for example, if I have, you know, seven, I believe the number is seventeen thousand students. If we have data points for seventeen thousand students and I'm looking for a specific trend for a specific thing, pulling that information out becomes very difficult. Um, and again, like that client-level data, I, I am not interested in that. I, I can't speak for the, uh, for the other trustees, but I'm not interested. It's more like, okay, well, our seniors from the year nineteen ninety-five to, to present, what are some of the trends in terms of graduation rates? What are some of the, and it, I'm just pulling this off the top of my head. To be able to go in and manipulate that, we can say, you know, kind of where we are and where our students are. That's all. And that's where a portal would sort of, you can, you can define, with the portal, you can define what accesses we have. So for example, Ares has all that information. You can block client-level data and say, okay, well, this is the aggregate data and this is, you know, yeah.
Would it be helpful, just kind of going out there, if we created like a webs, not a website, but just a page on our website where if you want to know about attendance, here's where you would go. And, and these are only publicly available data. So there's lots on Data Quest, if you want to know about English learner status, here you go. And we create hot links in there for individuals, would that help?
I think that would be great in the short term. I still really, I think what Trustee Hernandez uplifted about the use of data is something, I think that that's one of the bigger pieces for me that I wanted to see. Because another point that I, I had written down here, so like a presentation about like what data we collect, how it's being used. Um, but then also, I would really like to see recommendations. I feel like there has to be some ideas out there around like, hey, we don't collect this or we do collect this. I would be interested to hear from the folks that are using it, what they view as some of the kind of gaps. But I do think in the short term, having a, a webpage one hundred percent that just clearly, hey, go to Data Quest and click on ELAC if you want to know English learner achievement scores. If you want, you know, I think having something like that would be really excellent. But I still kind of am leaning towards what at least I'm hearing Dr. Lewis and Trustee Hernandez saying and something that's just a little bit more right at my fingertips, I just want to look at this. You know, and I know that we had it, we had Microsoft Power BI, had data dashboards before. I know that we have aspects of this. Um, and so, yeah, I guess that's why I started off, or my request would be like, what, what are we using? You know, um, what are we collecting, what are the recommendations? And then kind of just keep going from there. Because, you know, my whole rationale behind bringing this up is number one, there's a clear interest in data on the board. But number two, what we're thinking about, it's honestly ADA and calculating that. I am really worried about potentially losing out on any funding, you know, uh, for the eventual kids from other districts that are going to be enrolling. And I mean, Thomas, it's been very popular clearly. And so, so yeah, I've been thinking a lot about tracking ADA. So, um, but yeah, I think that there's a broader, bigger uh benefits. But I don't think that there's like, oh, let's just do this one thing and it's going to get at all these different aspects that I'm interested in, at least. Like, I don't think that there's like a program or a silver bullet. I think this is, is building a culture of data.
So it sounds like your ask is, what data systems do we currently have, which wouldn't be violating anyone's? Who uses that? When do they use it? And what do they use it for? Would that be?
Where online, yeah. And then we could go from there, I would think. We could go from there and if we want, if we have more conversations, like that way. I just don't want to speak so vaguely, you know? I want to be able to use the terminology that you all are using in the district office, at the school sites, so that we as a board can hopefully adopt policy to help. That's kind of where I'm, where I'm thinking. I, I want to see recommendations too, because I know that there are some people in our district that have some really stellar ideas. Uh, but Trustee Hernandez, you had your hand up, I felt like I kept talking.
Um, yeah, I guess I had like a, just kind of like a more general point, kind of yeah, emphasizing what I'm kind of trying. Uh, what I'm trying to get at more um, long-term. Um, because yeah, I'm trying to see, you know, is there a feeling that as a district, we need to move towards a more data-driven district to have these kinds of tools available for us? Because I think about some of my own experiences in data, I have a lot of background in that. And I remember, you know, working in hospitals uh not too long ago, uh, that, that, yeah, our data existed in a lot of different places. Um, and that was challenging in terms of being able to identify problems and being able to prove and show that these things are problems. And, you know, recently, you know, before I left my current role, we had, we shifted over a system that was super centralized. And I could look up, uh, you know, I could create lots of different uh trends and different views and slice our data in all sorts of different ways to be able to look at problems and show data that shows things super clearly. Um, you know, I imagine something, you know, here at our school district level, you know, and this is, this is like something that I'm thinking, you know, like five, ten, this is a very long-term thing, I think, at the end of the day. Uh, but you know, e- even just today, you know, something that, that we could easily look at once we had more robust data potentially, is even something like what Dr. Lewis brought up earlier, that there was increased incidence of unhoused residents. Uh, right now, that discussion is anecdotal. But if we had a database that kept track of these kinds of things that were centralized, could we look at different school sites and see that, wow, there has been an increase in these different things? And it's so clear and it's not just us saying that this feels like, or people have told us this, but it is like facts that we are able to look at. And we can do the same thing, you know, with o- other metrics that would be really uh relevant to us. You know, we can say that like, you know, graduation rates have been steadily increasing for a long time. Uh, that they maybe they've been decreasing among certain populations. Maybe we're able to look at things like, let's look at, you know, what happens to students' GPAs every single time they're suspended. At what, maybe that we see a point that there's a huge drop-off. Maybe we see, you know, trends like that, things like that, things that are only viewable when we can manipulate and shape data and kind of cut into like other category subsets of students. Things that are challenging to kind of do uh now with the way that a lot of the data is. It kind of gives you, this is one view, this is one presentation of the data. But I think, you know, what we're trying to do is go, where are we right now? And where can we maybe start heading towards um, in the very long term? Is I guess, you know, the way that I'm approaching this, and it sounds a little bit like um, some of the other trustees are also thinking about things in that way.
Yes, definitely. Trustee Dr. Lewis? You look like you want to say something.
No, 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 I was looking something up, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah. No, I, I one hundred percent agree with you, uh, Trustee Hernandez. And I, you uh definitely made me think of something with like the, you know, the disparate places that the data can be. I was also even just thinking crime statistics. We have, you know, maps of, you know, different calls that were made at different times. Also, something that you mentioned that's interesting is grades. You know, people always, you know, sit like, there's people on both uh ends of the spectrum who think that our test scores are great and who think that they're terrible. Well, what, what are those test scores like with the grades, with the this, with the that? So, I mean, there are some, some things I just don't think we're visualizing at all. Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Well, I think, you know, that also brings up an interesting point. Looking at, and again, I, I said this a bunch of times, I'm not a great test taker. Looking at testing as a, the sole indicator of success or not may, may sell us short in terms of student success. Uh, you know, a student could be doing a lot of great things and if the only indicator we're looking at is testing, if that's the tool, if that's the only indicator we're looking at, we may be selling ourselves short. So in order to get a full picture of, you know, this thing that we're calling student success, uh, you know, I, I think it's helpful to get a, a sort of a fuller picture. Um, and that's kind of where my thinking is coming from.
And then, you know, also just to add on to that, I didn't want to belabor things, but want to, you know, to just tie this back to what we were talking about earlier. Say we do implement the Air Force ROTC program. Now, maybe we could tag students from certain schools that are in these programs so that we can see, hey, we invested, you know, a hundred thousand dollars into this program and we're seeing these types of outcomes. Obviously, there's a lot of limitations to that, but um, hopefully this makes a little bit more sense. Uh, because we're all saying this, like the same thing, I think, which is just the um, not versatility, but uh malleability of the data and how we're able to play with it. Uh, yes, Dr. Lewis?
I'd be, I'd be really interested to hear uh Trustee Hacks and Trustee Roach's uh um position. Because, you know, I think it's valuable, I mean, I.
I'll tell you my position, I really don't think that I want to get into all of this data, that's me. But you guys seem to be in a different type of, of world that want to know every little detail. To me, I just go ask superintendent, I want to know this or that, and I get it from her.
Trustee Hack?
I have no comment.
Okay, now, and again, so for me, I, my work, this is what I, a lot of this is what I do for work. Um, and it just allows me to understand what's going on, that's kind of where it is for me.
I couldn't feel any more similarly. I'm a very visual person. So, um, but uh Superintendent Anello, does this make sense? Like some of the questions that you uh have to ask folks and then we'll just kind of keep checking in about this?
Yes, I think I can work on something, uh, it sounds like a presentation, just of what's currently available, who, what, where, when, why, without getting into specifics, um, which was the concern, I think, of Ms. Rocha and Mr. Hack.
And I also do like the idea of just seeing Ares too, if you want to print it out, just so that we could see what, at least you're seeing. I don't know, it could be interesting in a Friday board, just for information. Um, because again, it's just, I want to be able to speak y'all's languages. Um, so I feel good about this. Okay, let's move on. So uh, next up, item twelve, resolutions for first reading, we don't have any. Next up, resolutions for immediate action, um, wait, are these, are these our PIPs?
Yeah, these are all standard items, except um, one was added by, by president householder. I don't know if you want to talk about C, um, Day of Service and Remembrance?
Um, is the, is the board okay with that? I would love to vote on these all at once. Okay, so Day of Remembrance, I just thought this would be good to add to our list of ongoing, hopefully, resolutions. Trustee Lewis had an amazing idea to ask maybe somebody from uh one of the Veterans Associations to join us. Um, you know, we're thinking about ROTC, I don't know, it's a great way to bring in community. So, um, and because we have a, a board meeting on, I believe it's the ninth, it might be the eighth, somewhere. It's before nine eleven, so, you know, I think we'll be fine if we just want to wait until then to read it. And then that would give us time to maybe engage some folks. That's all okay, and it's just, you know, honoring nine eleven and saying that, um, encouraging folks to give back to the community. Okay, I mean.
Madam Chair, do you want, uh, approval of A, B, and C at this time?
I mean.
Yeah, I'm moving forward, A, B, and C to be approved.
All right, motion made by Trustee Roach, seconded by Trustee Hernandez to approve all of the resolutions for immediate action, A, B, and C. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Roach?
Yes.
The, uh, motion to adopt resolutions 2021-22-12, 2021-22-13, and 2021-22-2014 passes 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalero. Next up, resolutions for second reading and action. So we already got our first reading at our last, um, board meeting. And I was thinking what we've overlooked was to spend just a few days and spend a little bit of time at the beginning of our, um, meetings to read the ones that are. Um, if that's acceptable, we could go one by one, um, or put in a motion for these resolutions.
Madam Chair, I'd rather take all of them, A to H. I put that in motion. And do we then later on let you know who we want, what we want to, uh, reach, want to read?
Yeah.
What we need to do. Okay, so I, I'm putting it in motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion made by Trustee Roach, seconded by, uh, Dr. Lewis. And then I'm pretty sure I want to just ask you before I call for the roll, could Kelly help us with that? The last time you sent out this little, you know, kind of sign up. That was nice of me. Okay, great. Um, thank you so much, Superintendent Nello. So with that, uh, can we please have a roll call for the motion that was made to approve all of the resolutions for second reading and action, A through H?
Uh, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Roach?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolutions 2021-22-01 through 2021-22-08 passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, next up, 15 board policies for first reading. We don't have any this evening. We do, however, item 16, board policies for first reading and immediate action. We only have one, and it's a revised board policy 5145.3, non-discrimination and harassment. It looks like just to reflect Assembly Bill updates, but, um, can Miss Nello?
Yeah, I don't know if you have any, Ms. Barra, if you have anything else to add to that, it does reflect, uh, new Assembly Bill.
No, that's correct. Um, it, it, one of the things that came out and, um, was around uh, the, the, uh, student's ability to request for a name change or gender change. And when we looked at that law, there was, it, it showed up in a couple of different places, and this is one of them. We wanted to make sure that that update was reflected um, to reflect current law.
Well, thank you. And yeah, for folks who are listening, who are curious about these things, we have board policies and oftentimes there's Assembly Bills. And they say that schools have to or don't have to do certain things. So we just update to reflect that. So our policies match. Um, so, yeah, if there, if there, are there any questions on this?
May I say thank you to Trustee Hernandez, who's been a real advocate and champion for this? We appreciate you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead. Thank you. And I'll go ahead and share. And I was going to wait till the, the next one, because I thought it, it made a little bit more sense uh, there. But I think part of this was, um, had some students reach out to me, uh, some transgender students who, um, had some challenges dealing with, um, uh, you know, navigating the process of how do you, uh, get your name changed on your student records? Um, and the different policies behind that. So kind of in navigating that piece, we found some places where, uh, there, there was places where we needed to update um, and make it a little bit easier, uh, for students to go through those processes. Um, and I don't know if we're going to do it in the next one, but I'll, I'll just go ahead and say it now. Uh, but it is possible for students, um, that identify, uh, that have, you know, changed their name for whatever reason. I think traditionally we think of this as an issue that's faced largely by transgender students. Uh, but it's also faced by students that maybe come from foreign countries. And, um, in the process of coming here, uh, legal documents can oftentimes kind of like shift and shape names different than what they're used to being called in their home country. Or sometimes, uh, people in the process of assimilation, uh, like to switch over to more American sounding names or vice versa. People like to switch away from their American name to something that fits their culture more. And these kinds of things all come into play when, uh, looking at student records. And it can be challenging to see a name that you don't identify with in the student records. Um, so it was really great. And I am so happy that students brought this up to me. Uh, because, uh, you know, I'm not a person who identifies as transgender. Uh, so I don't have those experiences to be able to think about policies in the way to be able to shape those things. So it's really so helpful when the community does share these things with me, with other board members, with, uh, you know, administrators, with their counselors, because it allows us to be able to change these things and make sure that these policies are more in line and more inclusive. Um, so, you know, there, there is pathways here to get, um, both, uh, you know, your name changed um, on legal documents. There's one process for that. And then there's a process to get a change on a lot of the other, um, you know, unofficial documents. And then that process doesn't necessarily have to involve, uh, a, a parent. Uh, so for students out there that, that are, you know, concerned about things like, you know, outing themselves to their parents or to other people and going through those kind of challenging pieces there, there is processes in different ways that we can kind of help create a more, uh, you know, caring environment for these students. And, and, you know, and then, and then just to kind of end on that, I just kind of want to, you know, continue to encourage students in the community to, yeah, reach out to, to me, to other board members, to whoever you feel, um, you know, comfortable with to share any concerns or challenges that you run into. Because that's literally how policies and things are changed and updated. Uh, and this is just such a, like, really easily clear tangible example of how, you know, reaching out to people can make change that uh, affects, you know, lots of students everywhere.
I absolutely love that.
And, and of course, a special thank you, you know, to, to, uh, you know, uh, Superintendent Nello, uh, uh, Assistant Superintendent Abara and everyone else who worked on that. I know there was a lot of people who worked on that. And, um, you know, that's the real work. All I did to say is it's a problem, but you guys are doing the actual work to solve it.
Thank you for lifting that up. And I just would echo what, uh, Trustee Hernandez said. If there's anything that, um, you know, is concerning, reach out. This is, this is how the rubber meets the road. Um, and so I would entertain a motion perhaps from Trustee Hernandez if he so wanted to move on this item.
Yes, I motion to approve this item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, uh, Trustee Dr. Lewis to approve the board policy for first reading and immediate action, which is revised board policy on non-discrimination and harassment. So Ms. Cavalero, could you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Absolutely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Roach?
Yes.
The motion to adopt revised board policy 5145.3, non-discrimination, her- harassment passes 5-0.
Thank you so much. All right. So next up, uh, board policies for second reading and action. We don't have any this evening. Uh, information items for general information. Um, so this is exactly like what Trustee Hernandez was just talking about, which is the, the, um, administrative rules for how to change student records and then how, um, to, I'm guessing this is filing a complaint, right? Yeah, for the second one, revised administration rule on non-discrimination and harassment. But, um, I don't know if we, I'm guessing we want to go over the, especially the first one here, um, student records.
So it is for information only this evening, but we certainly can answer any questions that you might have.
I still want to. I was just going to ask if this is going to be updated in the student handbook, because I know we all just got the student handbook or where this can maybe be found, or if there's a way that we can, if this wasn't published in the handbook, maybe we can get this information out to students somehow.
Yes, that, those are all the things that we're working on. We're waiting for it to, uh, at least for the uh, board policy to pass this evening. But we are working on a couple of things. One is, uh, to get the information out to students. But the other is a process to put a process in place that one explains the difference between changing your name on student records or requesting, um, a preferred name, um, and the, and gender. So we are working on a form, uh, that students can complete to let us know that that is something that they want to engage in. And then a process for which they will, I, you know, notify staff at a school. And we can get that, um, noted in Ares so that it is consistent with their request. So that's what we're in the process of doing.
Are there any questions from folks? About A or B? Doesn't want that guy.
No, and you know, I just want to say, you know, thank you again. And, um, you know, it's great, yeah, that there is a process, you know, for any students or anyone who may listen. We're, we're in the process of working on, you know, streamlining the process and making it as easy as possible uh, with a form that you can fill instead of having to like submit like a written statements, uh, addressing this as the policy says right now. But if you, if you're listening and curious, um, you know, the, the first item right here is uh, where you're going to find the information about wanting to, you know, change your preferred name or, you know, what's legally there. Um, so that's where, where you might want to look. But though, I mean, I'm sure, uh, Assistant Superintendent Barra is working on uh, lots of great things to make this easier and accessible, uh, for students. Um, and I think the other thing worth mentioning that maybe we haven't mentioned is that, uh, a lot of the changes in these policies also were to have more inclusive language. Uh, previously, these policies had a really archaic uh, mention of his slash her, which is just something that, that, that doesn't really make sense uh, in being really inclusive to people. And then there was a lot of changes to that, um, to make the policies themselves read more inclusively, which I think is also really important to note. And so thank you again for, for all the work on this.
I do just, I, I would be remiss if I did not underscore that I know for a fact, people like Kelly Cavalero and other admin folks have been um, doing this for students who choose to go by certain names. I know, I remember, you know, years ago, asking some certificates to be reprinted, obviously a far cry from the student records. But I do just want to acknowledge that there have been a lot of people at our school sites who have been doing this. I think that this is just now, like, you know, Trustee Hernandez said, the language was archaic. And this, to me, we're just kind of getting ourselves up to speed. Um, because, yeah, and just have personal experience with it. And I know that our sites, um, have, have tried. So this is great. I'm really glad. Thank you so much, uh, Trustee Hernandez and everybody else who worked on this. Um, and two, I just want to, before we move on, any other questions? All right, future agenda items from board members? You can mention them now. You can let the superintendent know. Uh, Trustee Hernandez?
Uh, yeah, I think, um, it'd be great to get a, uh, presentation and discussion on our current set of COVID-related policies at district and site-wide levels. Um, yeah, I think that would be important. And then two, also a similar presentation and discussion on the state of technology and, uh, access to that, especially in regards to things like the digital divide, um, that can occur. Um, so just having a presentation on that and then I think a discussion, um, as a board would be important for those two things.
Okay, sounds good. So, um, other ones that bobs in? Uh, Trustee Roach?
Under adult education, I know we just put in a counselor. Um, I, it's been, I've thought about this because it happened to, uh, for information la- last time too. And I really never got into it. But when we have students that are trying to get their units to be able to graduate, especially if they're ESL, where there's a language issue, do we have a teacher at adult education to help them? Or do we have, uh, do we have interpreter? Uh, it's just an idea that I just wanted to know, because I know that's a hard thing. A lot of times students are sent over to adult ed to pick, pick up their units. And so they could graduate on time. But in the past, I understood we didn't have anyone there that could reach, could take care of it. So that's my question.
Trustee Hack or Trustee Lewis? No? Okay, wonderful. Um, so reports and comments from board members? Um, I don't have any. Trustee Roach?
I, I just want to wish our superintendent happy birthday. It was yesterday. And so, happy birthday to you.
Hey, yeah.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Jessica and Christine know that I'm dying here. So, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We might have to close out this meeting in your honor. Um, any other reports? Yeah, Trustee?
I'm always happy to embarrass people with, uh, my terrible singing. So you've been. Um, so, you know, over the last, you know, several months, I've been working with Kaiser Permanente to, uh, on a number of different things. And one of the things that we most recently had was a school supply giveaway. Uh, so the African-American, it's KPAA, I can't remember. Kaiser Permanente African-American Association, I believe it is. Uh, but what they did was they had, they held a fundraiser. And it was a number of backpacks, I believe there's something to the tune of, you know, 20, 20 backpacks, you know, stacks and reams of paper and, you know, a bunch of different school supplies, uh, were donated to the school site. Uh, and, you know, Crystal Berry, Principal, Principal Berry over at, uh, Lone Tree has been a great partner in, in helping to solidify that partnership. We are also working with, uh, the staff over at MNO Grant to bring, uh, some backpacks and school supplies over there as well. So just wanted to highlight and thank, uh, the folks over at Kaiser as well as, you know, the partners that we've worked with thus far in, uh, the district. So.
Thank you. We also went to that backpack giveaway, you and I, Dr. Lewis. Uh, Mayor Thorpe hosted a backpack giveaway on Sycamore and L. And both Dr. Lewis and I showed up to give out backpacks, which was fun, even though it was like a thousand degrees outside. Uh, Trustee Hack, I saw you had your hand raised.
Yeah, just, uh, in my out and about journeys, I've been out to about four or five, six elementary schools. And it's kind of cool, is to stand there on the sidewalk and watch these little torps come by with their masks on and their parents are holding their hands. And the parents have masks on too. And they just, you know, go into the school. Also, if you ever want to get any information about school sites, we'll talk to the crossing guards. I've been, I've seen four or five of them. I've talked to them. And they have all the information you ever want to know about that school. That's been fun, beginning school.
A hot tip, Trustee Hack. Uh, Trustee Hernandez?
Um, I don't have any pressing comments. I think we are, uh, headed toward the end of this meeting.
All right. So future meetings, we have the eighth and the 22nd. Um, and then with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting in honor of our superintendent's birthday.
Uh, I will make that motion. Happy 21st birthday, Stephanie, our Superintendent Nello.
All right, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Happy birthday to you. Goodbye.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes, and happy birthday.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Roach?
Yes, yes, yes.
The motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting in honor of Superintendent Nello's birthday passes 5-0.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
My estimation.